All right, good morning everyone. For being here in the Budget and Finance Conference Room. It is ten oh five A M and we have posted a proposed agenda this morning for the committee. So I'll call this meeting to order at ten oh five. And I think that we do have four members from the Budget and Finance Committee here in the conference room. Mr. Tahi. Did you start off with a roll call to verify? But we also have Chair Everkness at the podium as well.
Madam Chair, members of Budget Finance Committee, this is roll call for the Budget Finance Committee. The Twenty Fifth Amendmentation Council's special meeting for Friday, February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five at ten A M. Roll call, Honorable Shamin Parish. Honorable Shamin Parish is present. Honorable Carl R. Slater. Honorable Norman N. D. K. Honorable Zorman S. K. is present. Honorable Amber T. F. Crouy is present. Honorable Amber T. F. Crouy is present. Honorable Sharon Yasi.
I'm here.
Honorable February Navi is present. Honorable Lester C. Yasi.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Honorable Lester C. Yasi is present. Madam Chair, you have found a first person who is about to take form for this special meeting.
Thank you.
The weapons are sparking an aura.
Mr. Tahi. Thank you all who are listening on the call. We do have our unofficial Sergeant-at-Arms, Mr. Norman N. D. K. here. Thank you as possible. So thank you, Delegate Norman N. D. K. Members of the committee, thank you for being here this morning. It's a short agenda today, so I appreciate your attendance. We do have four of us this morning, that's February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. I know the day after, the council will consider the budgets. I do appreciate everyone driving this morning. So again, maybe with the invitation, Delegate Sharon Yasi can lead the committee in the vacation.
Yeah, I think. I think you, Madam Chair. And honorable members of the Budget Finance Committee. I do that. The Hachshew Yori, Yisho Yikha, Dakh Yurikunai, Kumashori, Yipalasen. That was here, I believe, in the day, I'd actually feel a sorry. The only one. They had it set over in there, yeah. The last year, I didn't think of. That's a very good idea. I don't know if you got it, but she not see some. Sorry, they were the bits of what I said, not clearly. But you're holding on, I understand, I got. And I would be there, there's nothing there. I hear you, I know, it's kind of a little bit of a lot of time. They want us to let me know when I'm gonna be back. Yeah, yeah, it's shit, but I go, God, you need to know, now, so did the nation. Yeah, the never be so hard, she not hardly do. He wash it, but it's a. I don't know, I didn't know, you just have to make me, but you. I don't know, I hope you need to, yeah, it's a little bit of a picture. I mean, the home, you can't, I mean, the country, I mean, the country, I mean, I don't have a key, I guess. I, yeah, I wish you could make me go, they say, you know, I can't, I'm gonna be. Mr. President, Chairman Speaker, Madam Chief Justice, Madam Attorney. Cut, or margin cut away. I'm not, I would, I would be. I need to learn how to buy a coin, you got, I mean, I was a bitch. I mean, the cool stuff, see, I mean, the cool, I said, I mean, I'm gonna.
Speakers office present here in the conference room, do we have the judicial branch on the call?
Yes. No.
At this time, the office of the president and vice president is also not on the call. So, Mr. Tahi, can you just send out that invitation once more again and remind them that they are requested to strike the button. Thank you. For the record, those individuals are not on the call or in the conference room at this time. We will continue to move on with our post agenda. Mr. Tahi, continue the post agendas for the record.
Madam Chair, members of Budget Finance Committee, the post agenda reads as follows. Budget Finance Committee, the twenty fifth Navo Nations Council Special Meeting, February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five, ten A M. Presiding Audible, sending Paris Chairperson on the call, Austin, the Vice Chairperson, located. Budget Finance Committee Conference, from Linderock, Arizona. One committal order will call indication to recognize the guest and leaving official. Three review and adopt agenda for review and adopt the general for working, two thousand twenty five Special Meeting. Five receiving reports, A report from the Office of the Auditor General and participations with partnership with Division Economic Development and Natural Resources on the Navo Nation programs that are currently in sanction from fiscal year two, twenty twenty five. B report from the Office of the Controller on the permanent trust on five year plan projects and expenditures. Six old business, none seven new business, A legislation number zero zero one seven dash G five. The natural relating to the Budget Finance Committee, pointing a member, a budget finance committee member as a shareholder representative of Navo Nation oil and gas company. Of A closing announcements and adjournments. Madam Chair, members of Budget Finance Committee, that is the post agenda running to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi, for reading the post agenda to the record. Mr. Tahi, any recommendations to the committee for modifications to the agenda?
Madam Chair, members of Budget Finance Committee, it's my recommendation that we only have one legislation for next week. That we refer the meeting from next week on the March fourth to March eleventh, as we'll report the more legislation should be forthcoming.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi. Did you also correspond with the Research and Development Committee about any proposed dates?
Madam Chair, members of Budget Finance Committee, I'm going to communicate it with, um, Miss Peggy Nakart on the, the joint committee meeting with the Resource and Development Committee, and we're looking at the last two weeks in March. Uh, to have that joint leaders, that joint committee meeting. So if you guys have proposed dates, please let me know so I can bring those things with, um, the Resource and Development Committee.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Tahi. The two schedule items, Mr. Tahi, going to the committees rescheduling. Over, right, when we, um, March fourth to the eleventh, so that's one person speak. That would be, yes, we had to add me to item number three business. So once we get, that would be, yeah. All right, over to the committee, um, I'll entertain a motion and then we'll get into amendments to the agenda. Do you want to offer a motion to adopt today's agenda? Motion by, uh, Sharon Tahi, you have a second? Uh, certainly by, uh, Chairman Eberknessa, right? Members of this committee, anyone like to offer any amendments to the agenda?
Um, good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. Everybody say hello. And offer amendment number one to include I M V, um, to agenda. I can do business to talk about scheduling. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Delegate Sharon Tahi. There's a panel on the floor, so you don't want to second the motion. Seconded by Sharon Eberknessa, right? Members of the committee, are there any questions on amendment number one? All right, hearing that at this time, go to a roll call vote. Delegate Norman DeGee, how do you vote? Delegate Norman DeGee goes green, Delegate Sharon has, how do you vote? Delegate Sharon has a blue screen, Chairman Eberknessa, how do you vote? Actually, Sharon, Chairman Eberknessa, right, vote screen, and Delegate Lusryaz, how do you vote?
Uh, Chairman Wopri.
Delegate Lusryaz, vote screen. Uh, we have four members voting in affirmative, myself not voting, one member excused. Uh, motion does carry for amendment number one. Members of the committee, are there any other amendments to the agenda? Very close, very close. I'm showing you the agenda very fast. One is keeping us on track, so. All right, let's, I can see there, I hear no other amendments, so we're actually the main motion. Uh, once more, we're adding a new I M P to new business for scheduling purposes. Uh, so on the main motion, Delegate Norman DeGee, how do you vote? Delegate Norman DeGee, vote screen. Delegate, uh, Sharon has, how do you vote? Green. Delegate Sharon has a blue screen, Chairman Eberknessa, how do you vote?
I will agree to that.
Yeah, Sharon, Chairman Eberknessa, right, vote screen, and Delegate Lusryaz, how do you vote?
I will agree, ma'am.
Delegate Lusryaz, vote screen. We have four members voting in affirmative to propose the motion does carry. Uh, we do have a, an agenda before us. I do see we have our, uh, oh, we have journals to review. Um, and to adopt today. Uh, the journals were sent out from February fourteen, two thousand twenty five. Members of the committee, is there a motion to accept the journals? Motion by Chairman Eberknessa, right, uh, is there a second? Seconded by Delegate Lusryaz. Members of the committee, any questions on the journals within the reports? Hearing that at this time, go to a roll call vote. Delegate, uh, Norman DeGee, how do you vote?
Green.
Delegate Norman DeGee, vote screen. Delegate, how do you vote? Green. Delegate, Sharon has a blue screen, Chairman Eberknessa, right, how do you vote?
I'll agree.
Chairman Eberknessa, right, vote screen, and Delegate Lusryaz, how do you vote? Delegate Lusryaz, vote screen. We have four members voted. Three, one, two, three, four, four members voting in affirmative, myself not voting, um, motion does carry. Uh, so we're involved with the agenda, we've adopted our journals, we'll go to receiving reports, we do have our, uh, Auditor General, uh, Ms. Helen Brown present, so welcome up the, obviously, the Auditor General. And we've also informed the impacted programs to be present, uh, but Ms. Helen Brown will give the presentation, and if there's any continuing questions for the impacted programs, they've been slowly available today. Um, we'll start, Ms. Helen Brown will give the primary report this morning. Thank you, Mrs. Brown, for reading the committee, members of the committee, um, and then, uh, Mr. Mo, Mr. Tahi, are there, are there files that you may pass out? Uh, Mr. Tahi.
Madam Chair, members of Budget Finance Committee, there was one document I emailed this morning, and it is more confidential, so that the item is going to be discussed, we need to go to its, like, the section for that one, it's, it's specific, uh, document. And that's from, um, the Division of Economic Development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tahi, and then, Mr. Tahi, just, uh, advise us when, when those, if questions um, are regarding that particular, um, document, and then advise the committee on whether, when we should enter into a direct session.
Okay.
Okay, um, now, we begin the presentation from the Office of the Auditor General. Um, what does it put this round? What is yours?
Okay, um, good morning, uh, Madam Chair, members of the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, I am Helen Brown, I'm the acting Auditor General. Um, I come before you today to provide an update on all of the programs that are currently in sanction status. Um, I was asked for this information, um, I believe last week, so I put this report together, and then, um, your legislative advisor um, asked to, um, have me come before the committee to provide a presentation. So there are currently four programs that are currently in sanction status. Uh, two of these programs are within the Department of, um, our Division of Natural Resources. And then the other two are within the Division of Economic Development. So before you is the report that I submitted to Mr. Tahi, so I'll go ahead and start with the fair office. And this is, uh, a report that we actually issued back in, um, twenty ten, um, back in June twenty ten. And this was, uh, a fair, a special review that we were asked to do. And this was regarding the two thousand eight and two thousand Navo Nation Fair. So there were approximately four findings, um, that were, um, reported on from that, uh, audit. So first is the fair had combined losses of more than four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it occurs losses on an annual basis. And then there's departments and programs that contributed on over nine hundred thousand per se production of those fairs at the time. We also reported that there was lack of controls over revenues and expenses. There was uncollected receivables that last, that led to the loss, uh, of fair revenues, approximately thirty six thousand. There was also unaccounted cash. Uh, we also saw that, uh, there was no cost benefit analysis that was performed before hosting the events. Uh, expenses were not being properly classified. Exempt employees were additionally compensated for working at the fair. And then payments to fair workers were not reported to the Internal Revenue Service. We also had a finding regarding the fairground facilities, uh, indicating they need improvements. Uh, the capital improvements, um, of the fairgrounds were not made a priority. And then there's, of course, there's no assurance that the fairground is actually safe for, uh, participants and visitors. The last finding was regarding the exceptional rodeo that was being, uh, held by the fair at that time. There was a bank account that was open under the Navo Nation's, uh, tax I D number. And then, um, that account number was established, um, using the Navo Nation tax I D number, and then the bank account activities, um, showed unaccounted withdrawals. So the corrective action plan for this particular audit was approved back in August twenty ten. And then we did a cap follow-up review in June twenty fourteen. We issued that, um, report number fourteen dash fifteen. And at the time, we had reported that all three, there was three findings that were not fully resolved. And I believe at the time, um, we did not, um, include the exceptional rodeo because that was no longer part of their, the fair events. So then we indicated that was there's three findings that were still not resolved. So with that, the Auditor General had recommended sanctions on the program and the department director. And those sanctions were approved by the Budget and Finance Committee on April seventh, two thousand fifteen. And they had approved to, and rather than, uh, approving sanctions on the department director, they approved to, um, impose sanctions on the division director at that time. So that's the fair office, that's the current update. Um, if you go to page two, I indicated in there that the department has been actually in sanction status for, uh, approximately ten years. Um, I don't know exactly the dollar amount of funds that have been withheld to date regarding this program. It is information that I periodically ask for from the Office of the Controller. I've been asking, uh, making those requests, and, um, I have not received any information to date. So I'm not sure how much of that money has been withheld. They are, they continue to be on our work plan every year. Uh, I'm waiting for the program or the division to come back to our office to say that they're ready for a revisit. I did add a note on there that we generally ask the Office of the Controller to withhold funds from the various business units for the sanction funds. And this one for the fair was a particular business unit. But I'm not sure if they're still withholding money from that business unit since the fair is no longer with the Parks and Recs Department. But is now within Division of Natural Resources Administration. Um, before I go to the tribal ranch, I did get a call from Brenda Holgate, uh, about two days ago to let me know, um, briefly what the status is, and I'm hoping they're here today to share that status. Uh, she just indicated that, um, really nothing has been done with the fair. Going into the second program that's currently in sanction status under Division of Natural Resources, the tribal ranch program. We completed this audit and issued a report back in June thirty of two thousand nine. There were approximately four findings regarding the tribal ranch program. Um, the first finding was regarding the lease practices. We indicated that needed improvement. There was no, uh, defined policies and procedures to adequately govern its lease processes. Um, the lease process overall needed improvements. Um, the ranches are not being effectively monitored. And there's no routine evaluation of the great raising fee. The second finding is that the tribal ranch program cannot demonstrate that the ranches are financially self-sustaining. The leases did not pay their, the lessies did not pay their leases, leases on time and in full. There was lease fee adjustments approved by the ranch that were not properly justified. Lease fees adjustments eroded the tribal ranch program revenues resulting in operating deficits. The tribal ranch did not properly evaluate the impact of the proposed escrow account for the Big Leaps Ranch lease revenues. There were vacant ranches and fixed lease, uh, amounts that diminished the tribal ranch ra- revenues. And then the tribal ranch program lacks expenditure information for each ranch. And then the tribal ranch program did not earn sufficient income to amortize the Navo Nation investment in travel ranches. The third finding was regarding their windmill repairs and maintenance. We indicated accountability of those activities were poor. The tribal ranch program cannot fully account for all windmills on the tribal ranches. The ranch program lacks a defined process to properly account for the repairs and maintenance activities. They did not properly verify the work performed under its repair and maintenance contracts. There were two contractors that were paid over eight hundred thousand dollars between fiscal year two thousand three and two thousand eight for repair and maintenance activities. And then the ranch program was slow to pursue alternatives to managing the windmill repairs and maintenance to minimize costs. The last finding from this audit was that the tribal ranch program resources are not effectively managed. We indicated here that the program staff responsibilities are not being fulfilled. And then the program does not properly account for its property and equipment. The cap for this audit was approved by Budget and Finance on December first, two thousand nine. We went back, uh, and did a follow-up review and issued our report in March two thousand sixteen. There were forty-two corrective measures that were supposed to have been implemented by the program. As of our follow-up review, uh, forty-one were not implemented, that's seventy-four percent. Therefore, the Auditor General recommended sanctioning on the program and the director. On June seventh, two thousand sixteen, the Budget and Finance Committee approved sanctions on the tribal ranch program. And they also approved to impose sanction on the division director rather than the department or program manager. So at the end of that is, I indicated, um, that the tribal ranch program has been in sanction status for approximately nine years as of fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Again, I don't have the information on the amount of funds that have been withheld to date. Um, but they do continue to be part of our twenty-five work plan, or annual work plan every year as I as we wait for the program to come back to us and say they're ready for a revisit. Um, so those are the two programs within the Division of Natural Resources. Uh, Madam Chair, I didn't know if you wanted me to pause at this time so that you can have, um, Mr. Holona and his staff respond to these, or do you want me to finish the report?
Uh, Mr. Brown, let's just, uh, focus on your first, primarily, and then if you have questions, you can call the, the, the.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So let me go ahead and go on to the next. Uh, these next two programs are within Division of Economic Development. Uh, the first one is the Business Industrial, um, Development Fund, that is typically referred to as the B I D F. Uh, we did this audit and issued a report in December, uh, two thousand nine. And there were approximately, uh, three findings. So we indicated, uh, from our audit that the first finding is that there's poor controls that have weakened the B I D F investments. There were no, uh, apparent return on equity investments. We also indicated that over one point two million of B I D F equity invest, investments, um, are deemed impaired. There's lack of information on B I D F commercial investments. The, uh, the division is inefficient and ineffective in administering the B I D F. The division is misstating as financial records. Uh, the B I D F escrow accounts and certificate of deposit are not properly monitored. And investment files are incomplete and unorganized. The second finding is the non-compliance of established lending policies and procedures. The Division of Economic Development approved B I D F loans despite the lack of pertinent supporting documents. Collection of past due counts is poorly managed. D E D is not initiating the write-off of deliquid accounts in a timely manner. Collection, uh, there's poor collection results in approximately sixty percent delinquency rate. Legal actions were not pursued in the collection of liquid accounts. The third findings, we indicated that the loans are poorly administered. There's a lack of segregation of duties in the accounting of the B I D F loan payments. The division is not maintaining, is maintaining an inaccurate information on the loan ledger system. The loan files, uh, there's some loan files that were missing. The B I D F repayment activities of borrowers are not reported to the credit bureaus. Uh, D E D misrepresented performance data for completed loan packages. And then there's an appearance of favoritism in awarding loans to the, at the time, the Economic Development Committee, which was an oversight. Uh, their legislative advisor. Hmm, so the cap for this, um, uh, the B I D F was approved by D N F on June fifteenth, twenty ten. We went back and did a follow-up review in, um, twenty sixteen. We issued that report on June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. And we indicated that of, uh, twelve of sixteen corrective measures were still not implemented, that's seventy-five percent of non-implementations. Therefore, the Auditor General recommended sanctions on the program department director and his chief financial officer. These, uh, sanctions were approved by the Budget and Finance Committee on January seventeen, twenty seventeen. And they did approve to, uh, impose sanctions on the CFO at that time. Um, as I indicated, this program has been in sanction for approximately eight years as of, uh, this fiscal year. Again, I, I unfortunately don't have information on how much money has been withheld to date regarding the B I D F. And then, um, they are, continue to be on our annual work plan, um, waiting for them to request a revisit. Um, I did, um, present the same information before R D C, I believe, um, last month or earlier this month, and, um, I believe Mr. Horace was in attendance, and he did provide, uh, an update to the committee at that time indicating that they will be, um, um, getting back to the corrective action plan. The other one within Division of Economic Development is the P card activities. We issued this report on December thirtieth, twenty eleven. And there was a couple of findings regarding the P card. We looked at the P card activities within the overall area of the division, not, not so much a specific department, but, um, all the different departments within the division. So we had a couple of findings. First was that the P card charges tolling one hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred attributable, attributable to the former real estate department accountant is questionable. Uh, the former accountant used her P card excessively to purchase a variety of items. Um, she also misclassified P card charges. She did not submit supporting documentation for P card purchases. Merchant records indicate questionable purchase by the former accountant. Items purchased by the former accountant were not found at the program. And then travel by the former accountant was also deemed excessive. The second finding was that there's a lack of overall, overall lack of, uh, accountability of P card uh, activities by D E D staff. We indicated that staff did not comply with Navo Nation procurement policies and procedures. Uh, there's multiple operating cards within departments resulting in poor controls over operating expenses. The staff did not comply with travel policies and procedures. There were purchases for foods and meals for meetings that could not be justified. Uh, there was field purchases for personal vehicles that lack proper accountability. There was no supporting documentation for, um, several P card charges, documentation could not be found. Cardholders, reconciliers, and approvers are not fulfilling their responsibilities. And D E D staff violated their P card usage agreements. The cap for this audit was approved on August seventh, twenty twelve. Uh, we did a follow-up in December twenty seventeen and issued a report. At that time, we had reported that only, only, or eleven of twelve corrective measures were not implemented, that's ninety-two percent. So at the time, the Auditor General recommended sanctions on the program and the director. Uh, the committee approved those sanctions on June fifteen, twenty eighteen. And they approved the sanction on the division director, but they delayed those sanctions until after January sixteen, twenty nineteen. We went back and did a second follow-up review in September twenty nineteen. Uh, we issued that report indicating that there was still, um, seventy-two percent of the corrective measures as not implemented. Therefore, the sanctions remain in, in place at this time. Um, as I stated, uh, this program, um, has been in sanction status for about seventy years. Again, I don't know how much funds have been withheld to date. And they continue to be on our work plan. We're just waiting for the division to, uh, notify our request for a revisit by our office. So, Madam Chair and members of the committee, those are the four committees that are currently in sanction status, um, from the program side. And I can go ahead and, um, pause there, um, for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for the report this morning, uh, some of the second motion from, by Sharon Paul Slater, except for the report. Second by Sharon Eberknessa, right, members of the committee, we'll go to questions on the report. Girl, your, Mr. Tahi.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, so my first request is staff, if we can get all of these budget and finance presentations. And I'll leave ask, um, in previous times, uh, should be your chair, you asked for our, like, hyperlinks in the agenda so that we can, uh, make sure that we have all of the information. So that would be great, uh, maybe we could create a budget and finance committee webpage and start having all of the documents, um, that regularly, uh, reviewed. So this could be one part of the sanction programs. The second area is, uh, Auditor General, I've noticed in your reports that you're waiting for the program to contact, so if I look at the first one in regards to the fair office. And this is probably very critical of approving any future claims for the fair office, since they've had uh, these findings in twenty ten, so it's been fifteen years. And, uh, none of their findings were resolved, uh, in twenty fourteen. Uh, what are some, either policy recommendations you want to provide to the committee if the program is not contacting your office? For their next follow-up? So it's been fifteen years. Um, I want to, uh, see if it's a policy we need to change in the Auditor General's plan of operation? Or it's something that we need to request when we're, um, developing the fiscal year twenty-six budget? Because I'm looking at sanctions, so I would want to know from the Office of the Controller how much was, um, if sanctions were collected on this program, because it also costs the nation to go back for a revisit. And so I could see, um, the nation paying for the first, um, or the first follow-up, but if, if the program is not responding then looking at what should be the responsibility of the program to help, you know, um, subsidize those those future audits, um, similar to what we were doing with the chapters, since the programs are not, um, fully implemented or currently implemented. The other area that I just wanted to, um, let my colleagues know, that this exceptional rodeo in some of our community, um, research in Sheep Springs is, uh, I remember this was an issue because, uh, they were basically moving money that should have went to that tourism center to finish. And it went into the exceptional rodeo, and then the, the money just vanished. That was the last trace of it. So I appreciate that this is still on the sanction or on the findings. And I would want to see what the report is, um. So under, I would just think of now, under the fair office, of who is directly, like, what program is that at now? Uh, because what I've noticed is some programs will, they will, um, change their plan of operation or change all their program. I'm not sure if that's to evade the audit findings or to evade the oversight. But I just want to make sure now, if we could identify in the year twenty twenty-five, um, who's responsible uh, for this fair office to, and who's responsible to do the cap follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Eberknessa, right, um, and then, right, there you have a question. Okay, well, well, I'll go first, I have questions first, so.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and Delegate Tahi, and, uh, members of the committee. Um, her first question regarding, um, the policies and procedure, procedure changes that um, the Office of the Auditor General may request are, um, it is really, uh, challenging at this time, uh, because the audit was over, uh, fifteen years ago. And I know that, um, my office has already been asked to revisit, uh, the cap process. And so these are some of the things that we've been asking ourselves as a staff on how we can do things different. I know one of the suggestions was that maybe, uh, going forward, there should be, uh, deadlines for cap. Um, maybe the cap, uh, should be, uh, given like a two-year period or something. And then if, uh, things are not being completed at that time, then maybe there should be some consequences at that time. That is one of the discussions that we had. The other thing that we're talking about is, um, prioritizing the findings. Um, you know, at this time, I always tell our audit clients that all of these findings that, you know, that we put in the report, the reason they become reportable findings is because they're considered high-risk issues. But, um, in terms of, uh, implementation purposes, that was one of the things that my staff and I were talking about, is maybe we need to prioritize the findings that we had, especially some of these older reports. And indicate in there that, uh, And indicate in there that the high priorities, maybe the moderate, those that have high risk, moderate risk, and low risk. And then maybe we can put a timeline on the high risk and say, okay, we want you to address these issues within six months. And then once those are completed, then we can go towards the moderate risk. And so those are kind of some of the things that we're, we're talking about within our office. And more so in response to this committee's request, asking us to consider re-changing our cap process to more administrative process. Because we want to make sure, one of the things that my staff are saying is that the current cap process allows us to go before this committee as well as R D C. And I think when our audit clients see that they have to report themselves to your committees, that it provides greater weight or maybe more strength in terms of their obligation to address these sooner than later. But if it's just coming for our office as part of an administrative process, what is that, is that going to change? How is, how is the attitude of the clients going to be going forward? Are they just going to now just shout the audit reports and say, you know, we'll, we'll get to this when we want to get to it? And so those are kind of the things that we've been asking ourselves as we address your requests going forward. So I, I don't have specific policies or procedures, Delegate Carney, at this time. But those are some of the things that we're talking about. And we're also contemplating about maybe changing how we're doing our audit reporting. You know, so one of the things the auditors are saying that these caps are taking too long. And so we've looked at other audit departments within state county levels and see how they're, they're addressing it. And one of the things that I've been seeing is that they include the corrective measures as part of the audit report. So as we're going through the audit, then we're working with our clients to say, what are you going to commit to in terms of the corrective measure? And then they put the target date and they put the actual steps in there. And so when I, when the Auditor General signs off the report, then we're essentially approving the audit as well as the corrective measures. And so that way we can go back and, and check on these things sooner than later. And so that was maybe one of the options that we're also thinking about. But it's going to require us to revisit our reporting process going forward. And I don't think it's going to be a change that we can undertake. It's just going to take some adjustment and then working with you as our Oversight Committee and Audit Committee as well as the other Oversight Committee. So those are some of the things that we're contemplating. I also want to mention to the committee that I am aware of the lists of procedures or consequences that were put in the twenty twenty-five budget for the conditions of appropriations that will hold these programs responsible for those COAs. That is one of the things that we talked about from my office about how we're going to do sanctions going forward. And the first question is, are we going to continue sanctions? And is that something that is still going to be from our program? Or do we want to transfer that responsibility to somebody else? And so those are some of the questions that we're also asking and I'm trying to address through our amendments. But I was really, you know, interested in seeing what the committee put together for those COAs. And so that is something that is similar to, to sanctions, you know, because we want to make sure that these things are getting addressed in a timely fashion. And it's just not the COAs, but it's also with the audits here. And so I, I hope I was able to at least kind of give you some insight into what direction we're going to, going to, towards in regards to the caps. As far as the question about who's overseeing the Fair Office at this time, it's my understanding it's at the Administration of the Division of Natural Resources. Before, after it left Parks and Rec, it went to Department of Agriculture. And I think they took care of the fair, I think, for like two years. And then after that, it went over to Natural Resources. And then they brought in a fiscal agent to help with the fair. And so, and I'll, I'll leave that to Mr. Holana and his staff to explain how all of that went this past fair and how they're preparing for the next fair. In order for us to do the follow-up on the fair, we actually have to wait to do this engagement until there is a fair, you know. So we have to, when the fair happens or immediately thereafter, is when the, the audit can be initiated so that we can see in areas like, say, expenses and revenues and if there was any type of profits that were made. So if we are proposing for my, for our office to go back, then it will probably be during the fair or immediately thereafter. So, so that's kind of what we, we have to plan for in that regard. So I hope I was able to answer your questions, Delegate Carney. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'll go to Delegate Herman to get.
Thank you. I'm sure you all watched the many members. And I saw Tom and thanks for the report. I'm kind of like, the problem was just hearing your report. On our agenda, it says very important. But we tend to make it into like a hearing. I wish we could hear the report and give it back to the land officer. Have a hearing separately, have a date to see what had they done with these allegations. Because all we do is hear the report and we ask all kinds of questions from our committees. We see that we don't get nowhere. If we separate them and take each individual departments and have a hearing with them, we would benefit more from it that way instead of, yes, we got, we know what the problems are here on this report. That's what we wanted to hear. But to fix the problem, I think we need to have a hearing with that department. What are they, what are they doing with this? We need to ask those questions in a separate meeting, like a hearing. I don't agree with them. Let's just hear the report and set a date for a hearing where we can sit down with that department and ask more questions. That way the department can have their, their answers for all these allegations or whatever they have been marked down for. They could tell us, okay, what are you doing with all these findings or allegations that are here? I think we would get a better answer that way than like now. I don't know if they're ready for it or not because, you know, they've seen this report before, you know. But hopefully at the end, we would benefit from all these reports. If we just set a special hearing for a matter of video or something like that, or anything, you know, that's my recommendation. Take care of these allegations or whatever they have marked down here. It is better than, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Herman to get, members of the committee. Today, the Auditor General has recommended that similarly to discuss the differences between conditions of appropriation and sanctions. So if we set, have a day work session to talk specifically with Auditor General about her recommendations, that would be prudent, that would be really important because our next budget is coming up. So this is a real-time discussion. This report, the two reports that are on the agenda today, the reason why they're on it today is to kind of set us up for the next budget or the next discussion that we're having. So this first one was to consider the, this topic, the sanctions, the programs, and the budgets that are forthcoming. And then the next report is the P T F expenditure rates, which is a conversation we had in early January about how we want to approach the permanent trust fund, five-year plan. So those are great ones, Delegate Herman to get, also to share Amber Cassar-Carney asking for those policy fixes. Because deliver introduction, a reintroduction to the committee on the topics that we will continue to address throughout the next month. So Delegate Herman to get noted your recommendation here and we can offer that as a scheduling item today. If the committee wishes to, thank you, Delegate. Members of the committee, if you have any questions, comments to me about that comment or to the Auditor General. Delegate Chair.
Thank you, Auditor General, for your report. I do remember back in the fall, when we were talking a little bit about how the Fair Office had an office, it mentioned the Department of, and now it was at, it went to Division of Natural Resources. And then it was funding requested during fiscal, fiscal agent. And I remember fitting, I was just a little concerned to hear a report from the legislative fiscal agent. And it was supposed to be due at the end of last year. And it was held at not, we haven't heard, like seen that final report. And that's what I got to request is to be that final report from this fiscal agent.
Thank you, Delegate Sharon Gazi. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Taki, you're Office of Legislative Services. We did receive the report from, from the fiscal agent. I, they gave us a copy of the report at the beginning. And then Office of the Controller had issues with that report because the numbers are not verified in the Office of the Controller. So there was no correspondence between verification with the controller and the money that was given to them. But did you look at the N A B I agendas to see if the N A B I ever key? I think we received the report last November. Was it a final? It was not final, is it? Oh, because they were not done with their audit. They said give them until the end of December, so they were still follow-up. Okay, Mr. Taki, do you, if the committee would like to receive that report, we can definitely add that to our agenda. Finance, but also notify the chairman, yes, it, that was, there's like two that can be, so we'll engage with our colleagues as well. So Mr. Taki, would you send that? And then Ms. or Delegate Sharon Gazi, Sharon Gazi also.
Thank you, Chair. Haven't seen you guys in forever. And thank you, yeah, for the question. So since the report came to N A B I, I requested the fiscal agent to send supportive documentation. The issue I had at N A B I was reports that we received prior were what appeared to be reports and weren't, didn't have enough information to support the numbers on the financials. So we requested bank statements and other supporting documentation and he delivered actually like about two or three weeks ago. And members of my team, I assigned it to have someone go through and primarily check that the money that went in and out of his bank account matched in general, what was on the financial, the cash flow part of it. I can report that. We're not finished, but it looks very close. But what I can also say is that was just for the fair. There are other reports, then other bank statements apparently for other events like the July fourth video that will be requesting this. But as of right now, and again, we're still kind of in the middle of it. There's nothing that raises any significant alarm as far as variance is from the official report. I mean, I'll be able to achieve a finer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Control and Key. And as the committee's request, do you have that report? When do you think you'll be finished with that analysis?
Let me check with my team, but we, like I said, we got it about two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, and they started on it. And I asked for a follow-up, I think actually last week, and I said, yeah, it's all looking pretty close. So I don't know when your next meeting is, but perhaps by then. Learn March eleven, maybe then.
Yeah, the committee's considering moving down.
So whenever you're next.
Okay, as of right now, the committee will consider changing these, but if they're in March or Tuesday.
Okay, the one.
Okay. Delegate Sharon Gazi, we'll get that. Members of the committee, Chair Amber Cassar-Carney, do you have any follow-up questions?
I'd like to have, thank you, actually, that previously the recommendation of re-examining how we receive reports. And if the committee could be, so the request would be at our next meeting or have a discussion with our chief legislator counsel on what that concept means or how that council would be implemented. Because this is our third year as a committee. But we have new committee members. The oversight should be fully aware of the budget, of the sanctions, and moving forward with the next budget. And as we're trying to reduce the amount of, you know, fraudulent expenditure, I would be interested in a hearing so that we're not constantly hearing reports and that nobody's accountable for these dollars until we take the strong stance that that will be action taken. And, and that will help also with budget cost. As programs come to the committee, and now we're knowing different delegates, acting for unmet needs and not being accountable for, for the issues that we see here. And it is a lot of race I did and the, the council we did through a listing of acting director. And that could also, although the director of Natural Resources goes to confirm the issue of sanction programs was not discussed. But the Division of Economic Development still has an acting director. And so that's what I would want to know that is it, what is the role of responsibility of the director to conserve political appointee? Or is it, if it had a deputy who undermined, such as might be, just, you know, an employee, a regular employee who moves the programs forward and doesn't, you know, all the, so that one interfere with the mission of the program, like providing services. I think we're living the life, not only what's happening at the federal level, but re-examining, then having foundation. And the systemic issue, the systemic issues, in my opinion, are based on that feeling of influence, which also could include the oversight. So how could we develop ways to move these programs forward? My intent here is to get services to the people or these critical services to be implemented so that the people benefit, whatever that outcome looks like. And I believe that these are all general dollars. I just wanted to confirm that these were all general dollars. And, and so I appreciate that recognition from my colleagues. I think that will change the way we're moving forward with reports so that we get the reports ahead of time, we're able to digest it. And the programs themselves, because of how the agenda, maybe we need to issue the agenda as far in advance as possible so that those programs are ready to respond. And they could also provide a written response so that we're not taking that time here, asking for questions. And we could just submit all of these documents for the record. And then we're creating a public link, then that's helpful for transparency. So individuals who are interested in following the oversight have access to that information. I'm, I'm, I'm up to that reform. And that could be a discussion on how we talk about meeting norms for the rest of the year and moving into the budget. It's who you're choosing to budget. Thank you, Chair.
Again, thank you, Chairman Amber Cassar-Carney. I will run with Mr. Taki to sit down and run some ideas so that we have some proposed agendas for the month of March. So this goes to the discussion of scheduling our next meeting, allowing the programs enough time towards the end of the month to respond. I appreciate everyone's willingness for it so we can get those reports as soon as possible. And also to understand a little more clearly our hearing and the accounting bill. Members of the committee, does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Helen Brown this time?
Thank you, Dan. I want this report. Um, thank you, Dan. I want to, this report and everybody coming here. Um, I know. For your office, Ms. Brown, it does cost, cost the time that it takes for your staff to. Um, do a lot of these audits. Um, it does cost a lot of money and. And I know we're short on resources and capacity just on the nation. I don't know, at some point, maybe in the work sessions, um, there should come a time when. You know, programs, chapters, they need to pay for this. They need to, uh, be responsible for some of these costs. Just to make sure we're helping in terms of, um, making sure your program, okay. They find your program because you're providing a service and, and that cost money. So I would like to just. Think about this more and how that would look, but, um, I'm wondering. I'm sure we'll talk about it after work, work sessions. Right now, it's kind of just a comment. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Delegate Sherlyn Gazi. And then Mr. Taki, could you work with, um, this one to. Uh, it was a request in the past about the breakdown, how much the audits cost and. Um, cost benefit analysis of the multiple times that you have to revisit. But if you could work with, um, Mr. Taki on developing that, uh, that sort of budget or outlook of your budget and how much he's expended general fund dollars. The committee's interested in assessing that, um, those dollars and how we can. There's a lot of nuances on, on how to look at budgets or the office of the auditor general, but. The audits itself, I, I don't know if that's a place called, but I know my colleagues have brought up in the past, so we'll, see if you were dying on this path. Thank you. Members of the committee, if anyone else has any questions for Ms. Helen Brown. Vice Chair, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Brown, have you looked into using any sort of like blockchain measures to, to either pilot projects with programs that are, that are under sanction or. Are, um, performing a corrective action plan?
Um, thank you, uh, delegates later and members of the committee. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get the first part of your question. Did you call that?
Watching, so.
Okay, uh, no, um, we have not taken those types of initiatives. Um, we are mindful of the duration of some of these counts that have been outstanding. But at the same time, um, we're also mindful of the workload that we have to do in terms of current audits and other audits. And so, um, it's different for programs, uh, as opposed to chapters. For chapters, we're looking at. The administrative service centers to help these chapters get themselves out of sanctions. But for programs, uh, we're hoping that they're getting some support from, you know, other departments or even, you know, upper management at the division level. And so, but no, we have not taken those types of initiatives, but it is something that, um. Uh, would be a good suggestion, maybe in terms of, uh, addressing what, uh, Delegate Friday had brought up. How do we get these cap, um, dressed sooner than later? Um, what do we need to do? Uh, but also I want to remind the committee that, um. I, I do want to make sure that we are the auditors. We provide assurance services. We do not undertake management tasks. We don't undertake management decision making. And so, um, so we're really, I, I really try to guard, um, what we can do in terms of like technical systems according to our standards. So that we don't, uh, impair our objectivity and independence. So, so we can help to certain extent. Uh, I think we just need to make sure we're not. Uh, crossing that line. Um, and then of course, uh, I think it would be very helpful, uh, for some of these programs, um, to get. Some support from upper management. Uh, maybe the, within each division, they need to start convening, um, a committee to address various audit, not just. Our internal audits, there's also, um, you know, the federal audit, uh, the single audits that are done. There might be other. Uh, agency reviews for a lot of their grants and stuff, so there's review issues and audit issues, and I think maybe that's what. Each division needs to undertake is where they need periodically to, with their respective programs. And to see where things are at in terms of monitoring, but also to provide that support that's needed. So, um. Uh, I hope I answered your question, delegates later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Um, we'll go back to Vice Chair, sir.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Controller. It's like you got the Zil jacket on and. Your four A C M R is eighth place in Syria, whereas my internal on Mr. Pliss. So I'll be nice to this point. No, so with the integration of the new Microsoft system, I was trying to look up while, uh. Active Beijing was providing a report about their blockchain integration. Looks like there's an edge or one that you can integrate. So I think it'd be really helpful if, say, to by the end, two, two meetings from now, we're going to follow up with you on a couple items. If you can include, um, either the pricing or feasibility, and then we could use these programs to, um. To do sort of like a pilot project before like deployment across the whole nation. Some of these, like, there's no action, there's no, like, current activity, right? Like, some of the idea of stuff, but. With the fair office, presumably we're going to have a fair this year and. If we can get a quicker implementation or have them start using the, the new system faster. Because I guess i- if you're not super familiar with it, Ms. Brown, it creates, um, unneedingable, like, ledger. And so, of course, you have our internal one that will be on the ERP. But, you know, that can be subject to manipulation or changes or whatever happened back, which is oftentimes extremely necessary, right? You've miscoached something, um, we changed the bin, you know, there's reasons that that happens. But in terms of like tracking other dollar comes in, other dollar comes out, you have something over here that you care with. What the accountants are used to do. And I know that. I'm sure Accenture, KPMG, all of those firms have blockchain practice at this point for tracking this stuff, so. Um, I guess, Controller, if you're willing to commit to looking at this, I'd be happy to maybe the three of us or whoever else wants to talk about it. Have a meeting in a week or so just to think through, or if you could, if you're controlling, you can do some level work and then you can have that sort of meeting, because. If we have a need in this next budget to sort of fund. The pilot project, I'm not committing us to do that right now, but I guess I want to see what that, that dollar value looks like. I would hope that it'd be an easy bolt on and it's not going to be expensive. Um, if we just stick with the Microsoft stuff right now, but, you know, we can do a lot. It's weird things, we're back to two thousand nine, two thousand eleven, I mean, just going farther and farther back and. Yeah, for our people's benefit, right? And if you can provide all the oversight and sunlight as you want, if you don't have a chief executive. Since twenty ten and before then, who's invested in actually addressing these issues and believes with them, believes them to be important for redress, then. We're extremely limited. We gotta just give her the program, give her the money, give her the staff. But it leaves a huge gaping hole for things that people care about, which is economic development, their, um. Real estate services, things that are critical to our government. So, you know, these are the limitations that we have, but we're trying to come up with solutions. So I guess we could try and go back and look at. Transactions and have something that doesn't really make sense. For me, it's forward looking in how we can be positive and provide that accountability to our people. Uh, and enter the external funding resources. There's a real estate component about having digital tokens for every transaction, but I'd love for us to look at some point. I know Mike and I have spoken about that in the past with their program, um. We just need to get everybody up to the baseline of the job they need to do and to get the resources to do that. And leadership has to be the confidence that we're doing this before we start trying to do things, but for accountability, that's my ask, so. I want to direct it if you can commit to it now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Slater. Um, give us some time to Mr. McKeever to respond to capabilities of the. Investments, but we, by the nap, we, and then we'll give some time to Ms. Helen Brown to, um. Provide some answers as well, so go ahead, um, Mr. McKeever.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Sharon, that's your, her, Vice Chair Slater, a question. Um, so a couple of comments I'll make on that. So we, um. One of the reasons we, during the procurement process, we selected Arctic IT was because of the capabilities within the Microsoft Azure environment. Um, I, I, I don't know if Farkner FMI system. Um, is as sophisticated as that, but I know this one is. So what I offer to members of the committee is, um, we actually have. Calls with the Arctic IT team. I was on one yesterday before council, I was supposed to be on one at two. Um, they can describe all this to the committee. I think you guys met them when they were on site, I don't know if they go to, so. Um, any and all of those capabilities can be explained. I'm not a reality expert, so I don't know exactly what the Microsoft Azure environment is. Capable of, but I'm sure they can describe it. Um. And I do know also that there's a lot of, um, because it's Microsoft, uh, base, there's a lot of inherent. Um, technological protections with cybersecurity, um, that we just don't have right now. Um, so the effort to move to this new RP was, was to update the system in and of itself, but also. To create the, the foundation that Navo Nation could be on a, um, single, um, secure. Um, reporting environment because, um. You know, that's saying too much right now, we're just not there. Um. So we're hoping this solves a lot of those problems. Um, so what I would say, uh, Vice Chair Slater is I could definitely commit to getting you some matches, but it may be more useful if the committee just. Sits down with one of these meetings that I have with Arctic IT. We have them twice a week, so I'm trying to get this against someone as soon as I'm ready. Um, I can comment now, though, that the target date for implementation is to begin the fiscal twenty six year on, so. Next stop, totally. It's a little bit ambitious, but I think it's something we can accomplish. The last comment I'll make, um. To Vice Chair's comments, uh, and I think it's relevant, um, and I think, uh, Ms. Brown will agree with me. Um, shouldn't that when we talk about, um, the effectiveness of these reports, if no one's going to take them seriously? Uh, as an auditor in recovery, I can tell you that, um. One of the, one of the reasons why I introduced the committee that coastal framework for internal controls is so that we establish a guideline that Navo Nation follows when it comes to. Internal control, which governs the protection of our assets, governs how we procure, governs exactly what, um, Ms. Brown is reporting. And one of the things at the very top of that coastal framework, there's seventeen. Uh, concepts, I guess you will, within that framework, and one of them is called the tone at the top, which is something auditors always, um. Evaluate and base risk on. And the concept is such that. If, if you can have, this is why I constantly bring up to committee management. You can have the best designed internal control system on the plan, but if you got a tone at the top, that's a way to just ignore it. And override it. It doesn't matter what you do. We could go to the Azure blockchain, we could have the best system. If, but if the tone at the top is such that we don't take internal control seriously or we ignore reports like this. We're wasting money on the system. So. I hear the comments of the committee. I, I would, again, as a former auditor myself, I, I would definitely. Advise and help the committee design accountability standards for stuff like this, because. The fact is, Ms. Brown can do all the work she wants, but. If the report's going nowhere, they, they don't really need it. They're just something to talk about on a Friday after the budget meeting. So, um, I, I would definitely encourage the committee to continue to work with my office to implement the coastal framework. Uh, and also, um, talk about what the new capability system. Thank you, uh, Chair and Vice Chair Brown.
At least I couldn't see the, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Controller McKeever. We'll go back to Ms. Brown.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair and members of the committee, and of course, um, Mr. Controller. Um, I do thank you for those comments. Uh, I do agree with him in terms of, um, what he's speaking to in terms of the coastal framework. It is something that, um, our auditors and my staff are aware of. Um. It is also something that we recognize in terms of, um. How, how we can implement that within the Navo Nation government. Um, I think that the tone at the top, uh, is always a major issue. But I think it's also something that's, um, not always easy to discuss. Um, because the, the, the attitude of accountability and transparency should come down from the top. And filter all the way down. And so we try to mention that in our reports, um, but when we present those to. Our, um, audit clients, um, they would, you know, disagree. But those are things that we do see through our audits. Um, I agree that there needs to be certain standards that need to be set. Um, not just accountability standards, but even in terms of, uh, ethics, um, how we conduct ourselves as. Not only employees, but elected officials. Um, you know, we also have, um, fraud. That is something that, um, we were hoping to achieve with our new website is to bring more awareness on our website. About, uh, broad awareness and what employees and, and officials and even our. Community members out there, our Navajo people, if they see something, then they should have a resource to be able to report those, um, issues to us so that. You know, it's brought to our attention. I have a small staff. There's only, um, I think, um, ten auditors, including myself. And we are responsible for not only the hundred and ten chapters, but all of the departments and programs. Um, we did a, what we call an audit universe assessment. Uh, this for the executive branch, and I think the last count was, um, three hundred plus. Uh, departments, programs, even down to sections, and we have not gotten to a majority of those in terms of, um, our audits. Uh, a lot of the work that we do is for chapters, um, that's becoming, uh, a, a big area. Um, most of my auditors right now, that's what they're dealing with is, um. Audits of certified chapters. That's where we're, we're struggling with them as well. Uh, I've been in meetings with RDC, uh, talking about how, um, we can do better. Uh, in terms of, um, helping the chapters, especially certified chapters, and then really holding them responsible. For areas that they need to improve on and they're not being addressed. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And so, um, my office will continue to be there as part of discussions as to the best of our abilities, and so. I do appreciate, uh, what the controller has stated, and also, uh, I'm open to any suggestions from the committee, uh, such as what Mrs. Slater. Um, had indicated. Um, I think it's, um, I always tell my staff that we shouldn't be afraid of change. Uh, we should be looking at what current technology is, um, there to provide to help us. Uh, it's going to take time sometimes to implement, but I think it's worth, uh, exploring. It may become a good, um. Suggestion or idea for the nation to pursue, so I am open to those suggestions. Uh, and it sounds like we're going to continue to have discussions down the road. And we, and I'm happy to, to hear that and be part of that, or at least my office to be part of that. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Brown, and also Mr. McKeever, uh, as Vice Chair Slater had asked. Would you concur in something to do with opening of her on the report to work together on identifying those costs or efficient ways to find, um. The software needed for the auditor general's office? Or is the committee, does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Brown? I'll go back to Chair, Department of Department.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Committee. So, um, Ms. Brown, I'm just documenting because, uh, we have staff, so Mr. Taki. Uh, so my expectation is, um, however you document the follow-ups. And so Mr. Taki is now helping the committee, uh, make sure that we have recommendations. One of the areas that will help us is, uh, finally updating the policies and procedures for the auditor general's office. Like, give me an idea when that will be available, um. And I wanted to go back to the question regarding accounting, uh, technical assistance, understanding that's not more burdened. So was it Controller, were you saying, is Arctic IT going to help the committee at least identify where there's a need for accounting? Some divisions, uh, it's my understanding, do not have an agenda. So are we going to create a system? Uh, like how we have ASC for the chapters, maybe a similar system for executive programs? If you don't have the accounting individual, the vacancies, um, because of the training. Uh, so I, I want to kind of touch upon that point on what then can we look at if we need to invest to try and keep. Um, our funds secure? And, uh, I wanted to ask the question in terms of, uh, this might get. And I wanted to ask the question in terms of this subject, which is just for Department of Justice. When I was part of the white collar team my first term. And we would. Review all of the white collar crimes that were reported. And I'm not sure that if any of these. Activities here or findings were actually submitted to BOJ White Collar Crime Unit. Because it does sound. And I'm not sure what the threshold is, but at least in your findings here, and since there hasn't been a response. But it does sound that there has been a mismanagement and abuse of that information. General funds. So I can ask that as a second question. Thank you, Shabisha.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Brown to respond to the questions.
Thank you again, Madam Chair and Delegate Quadi for the question. As far as the Auditor General policies and procedures, we are about. I would say eighty percent done. It is something that was long overdue. I recognize that, so I've been working on that personally. We want to make sure that the procedures manual reflects how we are currently. Conducting our audits. And when I went back to review the manual, I saw that there was a lot of gaps. That we needed to address. So that's what I've been working on. But it is a procedures manual, but otherwise we do fall back on our. Yellow Book standards that we adhere to as government auditors. So that's also something that we refer to. Once that's completed, I can keep Mr. Tahi updated on our progress as we move forward. Since he is now supposed to work with us on that, and I can share any information with regards to the audits with him as needed. I'm hoping our website will be up to where we we will be posting all of our audit reports and the follow-up reviews. As well as the corrective action plans and any resolutions that support those corrective action plans and sanctions. So. That is something that we are working with with our IT consultant on that. As far as the question about. I'm sorry, your second question. Okay.
Ms. Brown, I'll go back to Chair and remember. I'm going to do your question.
I didn't turn on anybody. So, white collar crime.
Okay, thank you for that. I believe you were referring to the Public Integrity Task Force that was created by the Attorney General and within the Department of Justice. And so. We do refer audits over to Ethics and Rules Office and White Collar Crime. If we feel that they need to look at some of these issues further. And so I believe that may have been done for these program audits. They are fairly old, so I would have to go back and check our records. I do want to mention to the committee that I have not done as many referrals since I've been delegated in acting because. Especially to the White Collar Crime Unit, because there's really nobody employed in that unit at this time. It is something that I started following up on when I first became delegated. There was just one investigator at that time, and he retired. And so thereafter, I've been asking if the unit has been staffed and so forth. And I've always been told that is something that they're working on. So there is a statute of limitations with regards to that. So. The statute of limitations, I believe, starts today that they, we have to make that referral. And so my concern was that if they're not staffed, they cannot address these issues and so forth. And I didn't want. To make my referral and then let it sit there, and then the statute of limitations will expire or elapse. So that's the reason why I've been trying to remain updated on the status of the White Collar Crime Unit. I believe it was about maybe a year or more so ago that they did finally hire an attorney and investigators. We did have a meeting with them. They came to me and said that these are some of the things that were left. For the for the unit, and we're going back and and looking into those. So that's how we started working with them. But as of now, I believe there's no staff at all. There's no attorney. There's no investigators. They just have a legal secretary. And so, so I'm not sure what the status of that. I've been talking with Mr. Lou Harrison with the Ethics and Rules Office. Because there's supposed to be like a tri-agreement between our three offices on some. How to address some of these like white collar crime issues. And so. It's difficult to do that when these respective other programs are not fully staffed. And so that was one of the things that Mr. Harrison and I had talked about is. Meeting with Mr. Vernon Jackson within the Department of Justice. He is a prosecutor overseeing that unit and seeing how. What is the latest with that unit and what we can do. But otherwise, if the staff is there, the programs are are prepared, then we will make those referrals as need be. That's just part of our process within the Auditor General's Office. I hope I answered your question, Madam. Our Delegate Quadi, thank you.
Ms. Brown, Chair. I have a second question about that. I didn't get breakfast, so I didn't get here open.
That's not fair. Thank you, Madam Chair and Chair Quadi for your question. So what what I I can answer some general statements, but what I would maybe request is. You know, not to request another meeting, but it might be best if. I sit with the committee and go over the overall strategy that OOC has with this implementation, because. Our current way of doing things is we're very siloed. So we got accountants all over. We got lawyers all over, and no one ever agrees on anything. So we're trying to centralize more of that process, including procurement. It's not popular because it takes a lot of. Abilities away from. Divisions that they don't really need, including the accountant side. And I'm not really saying that we have to eliminate the ability, but we should limit it because it really should be. And and the problem that we have is. When you speak of accountants at divisions, they have to be FMI certified. And that's a long, expensive, stupid, stupid process that we just don't need. And so. Which is a pretty long and. Expensive process. And the fact is, a lot of the accountants can't pass that certification. So. And I'll give you an example. That is one of the reasons why these checks are so slow is we let the program initiate it. But the last report I got is there's no FMI certified in the better administration. Well, it's just the FMS certification that's required, FMS. And so that slows down the ability for us to get the information to process. I'm not pointing the finger. I'm just saying that's the reality. And so, again, just the strategy of OOC is to try and consolidate and centralize some things that just don't need to be. Siloed right now. And this new system will, and I've communicated this to Arctic IT, and. The new system will help facilitate a lot of that. I'm just hoping I don't get railroaded by. The executive branch and or DOJ. And all of their expertise. I think sometimes they. I'm being honest, undermine my efforts, and I just need to do this and do it right the first time and. Make sure that our policies are flexible, but. In a manner that we protect our data integrity, our transparency, our accountability. You all will see a lot more capability with the new system. But it also has to be supported by sound policy. And that's what we're trying to do. In concert with what we're doing to open this by hours over, and that means procurement. Rights, which. I know DOJ has drafted, but frankly. I don't know if they know the capabilities of the new system for procurement. So I think I need to review that. And then just make sure they match. Otherwise, we're just going to be here again when the system comes online in roughly six, seven months. And then. The Appropriations Act, I was on. I told Chair Parisis I was on demonstration yesterday morning about how budgets. Are digital now and how we can. Get more transparency with budget revisions and the approval process and how one sixty four can be digitized and being not as a bunch of a burden. So there's a lot of things that. Frankly, I've kind of kept to myself because the more public I make it, the more I get pushback. So I I'd like some time maybe with the committee to sit with Arctic IT, maybe phone out, and we can talk about the strategy and what we're trying to do. Again, not in an effort to. Undermine programs or anything, or or. Or take power away from anyone. It's more to. You know, we we only have one shot at this, Gary. We're spending a lot of money to put it in the system, and if we support it with the same. Policies that run it now, we're just wasting our time. I think it's, again, as I kind of reported before, it's hopefully going to force a lot of policy change.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. I think the committee is eager to see your policy revisions and what the capabilities of Arctic IT are. I know the committee has sat down with you initially and Arctic IT to see some preliminary. Modules of what we can do, capabilities, and since we know that the team has a whole commitment further. Supervise the services to the Navajo Nation. So, but I'm curious today from the committee and also from the presenters, in which we are working with to provide updated policies and procedures is. We need to have, one, a sit-down discussion about the plan of operation and abilities at the Auditor General's Office. Also at the Controller's Office, and have a sit-down and hear those updates. And then secondarily, we can sit down collectively and talk about. The capabilities of the Navajo Nation Audit Committee and how we can better improve. Those practices for our committee as well. So we'll take some time in the month of March to look at our calendars and plan those out. And on top of that, I'm hearing for the sanction departments and programs that are impacted by the sanctions and to digest that. So that's what I'm hearing right now. Mr. Tahi and the committee will work on what that will look like in the future, but in the meantime, those are the notes that I have. Members of the committee, is there any questions for Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I do see that BOJ has joined us, so I wanted to ask a question about the White Collar Crime Unit. And the statute of limitations we have received, and we've been working on Title Seventeen revisions. So is a statute of limitations, if you know now, or can provide to the committee? What title we would find that in? Because I know we're changing statute of limitations, like when it comes to murder or. You know, sex, rape, on Navajo Nation. I just want to see if we could get that all in one shot. But if there is a white collar crime unit, what does that look like? And. And how can we have a conversation with the Auditor General Office of the Prosecutor? We said three.
Ethics and rules.
Ethics and rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome on this department. We have this.
Hey, good morning, members. Catherine Bolzus, Major of the Department of Justice. In regards to Delegate Quadi's question, the White Collar Crime Unit has been staffed for quite some time. I think at this point, in November, July, they had a. Prosecutor and investigator. So if they've been staffed for, I think, almost a year now, I would really encourage Auditor General to reach out to the chief. Prosecutor, Mr. Vernon Jackson, because that's. In order to avoid the statute of limitations, even if for some reason they're in an individual in the White Collar Crime Unit, the chief prosecutor. Access all those. And filings, and he will make sure that they're addressed. So I would don't need the, you don't miss any deadlines. So if her rooms aren't submitted to his office, then we will miss our deadlines. But. I just. I would really encourage Auditor General's Office, and when she prosecutors, she prosecutors, to have those conversations, but there is staff and. And then. My understanding, and I was just trying to pull it up right now, but this is a statute of limitations, but I would have to go to the committee to. Seven. But I will again, if you. I have to, I get the exact elements.
Yeah, could you just email it?
Yeah.
Members of the committee, is there any questions on the reports? Oh, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So we have the directors here. I wanted to get an update. Just to identify who's going to be the point of contact to follow up on these four audit reports that have been outstanding. So the first one was issued in twenty ten. Fifteen years ago. Targeted managed program twenty oh nine, sixteen years ago. Twenty oh nine for DEB. And we did our development key card at twenty eleven, so it's fourteen years ago. These are all older than my daughter, so I would need to get a response. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Delegate Quadi, for all of the time to the division to identify the credit contact for future meetings on. These on our missions here. So I'll start with the Division of Natural Resources. Who is your?
Now, again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. Members of the Financial Finance Committee. Point of contact for there would be Harlan Charlie, who would definitely. Division Director for Natural Resources and Brenda Holgate. Who are financial person there at Division of Natural Resources. And then for Tribal Ranches will be Department Manager Jesse Jim. They're currently all already are working on the Tribal Ranch situation.
Mr. Holone, for being here with the committee today, and I'll go to the Division of Economic Development. First. It's Harlan Charlie and Brenda Holgate for the Navajo Nation Foundation. And Jesse Jim for the Tribal Ranch. And Division of Economic Development.
Will they say when they're going to respond to the second cap?
Well, Mr. Holone, could you come back? And. When will your responses be done for the follow-up cap? For the corrective action plan? Do you know when Mr. Jim and Mr. Charlie are going to? Oh, Mr. Jim, I apologize. Mr. Jim and Mr. Charlie are going to be finished with the call. Do you know when?
Well, we can probably get it done in two weeks.
So we'll try to, for scheduling purposes, we may schedule this for the end of March. At the hearing. And then, Mr. Morris?
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair and Vice Chair. Slater. And committee members. Thank you for the invitation to come here and present an update regarding these two sanctions within the Division of Economic Development. Jay Emerson, Horace the Third, Indonesia. Ashaheen Ishlik is on investors team. I'm originally from Tuba City, and my dad is Hopi from Arrabee. And. I currently reside in St. Michael's. Arizona for the past several decades now. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of Division Director Tony Spolanas. Mr. Tony Spolanas is unable to attend. I am serving as the Chief Financial Officer for the Division of Economic Development. I joined the division on April twenty twenty three. And. Our division. At that time, didn't have sufficient management managers. To implement several programs. And so the first initiative Mr. Spolanas assigned to me was the SSBCI. The eighty-eight point seven million dollar programs awarded to the Navajo Nation. That program was implemented successfully. The first check disbursement to partner change. Uh, that program was implemented successfully. Uh, the first uh check disbursement to uh partner change labs was given the day before Thanksgiving for seven million dollars. The second program that was assigned to me from Mr. Spolanas was the eighteen million dollar uh K two one one five one six.
Mr. Horace? The ads who will be identified for the um vision of the key card, the the sanctions.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. Yes, I'm getting, coming right to that. Yeah, just uh just real quickly here, the Artisan and Small Business Economic League Program that was implemented successfully this past fall. And so now the uh the next program that I'm directly oversee is the Business Industrial Development Fund. And uh I have submitted to you as of last evening before five o'clock to Mr. Rodney Tate, our uh corrective action plan to reopen the B I D F program uh September of twenty twenty-five this year. I've submitted all the supporting documentation. Uh, the detailed corrective action plan according to the Red W uh special review in two thousand and sixteen. I've also submitted to a special investigation in two thousand and twenty-four of the the operations of the program from uh staff within the division. So based on that information and um all of the information that I've gathered about the program, I've established this reopening of the the B I D F program in two thousand and twenty-five. Thereafter, on the bottom of that memo is a request to Ms. Helen Brown to uh review our program regarding our corrective action plans uh six months after we've uh initiated loan activity, so she can have a sample. And then from that point, we we are praying for a removal of our sanctions. As far as the second uh sanction regarding the the P card, that is um currently, uh as I started in April of two thousand and twenty-three, I was issued a operations card. So I have both a travel and operations card. So we have uh sufficient um activity for the past almost two years of using the operations card successfully. It hasn't been repoed. And so we'll be able to uh request testing of our current procedures and our processes. Thank you.
Sounds like the Division of Economic Development is ready for the hearing and Mr. Horace is the point of contact.
That's right.
Great, thank you. Ms. Rob, did you receive the information or he said he sent it yesterday, so I don't even have time to check it out. And uh, Mr. Brown, first question, if you read that information, otherwise you uh consider that in scheduling?
Um, yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Um, what I did receive from Mr. Horace um yesterday via email is uh the memos. Uh, I think this is what he's referring to. And then I also received another um report, I think, revised status. So those are the two documents that I received. I did not receive any other uh documentation uh to to substantiate what is stated in his reports in terms of progress. Um, so uh, so therefore I view this um as just basically progress report on uh the current cap implementation efforts by the E D. Um, well, I I reviewed it. It's just basically telling me that all of the corrective measures are in progress at this time. Um, so um I'm under the assumption if my D E D's completed everything, then they will be coming back to my office requesting for another review. So this is in regards to the B I D F. I did not get any update on the P card uh other than what um Mr. Horace presented verbally. So I did not get anything on the P card aspect, just the B I D F. So um he indicated in his um timeline here that um he would like for my office to return um six months after the B I D activity has resumed. Uh, basically, you can't verify the corrective measures unless there are loan activities. Um, so um, so that's the reason why um he wants to resume the program so that they can show that they're they're doing things better with the B I D F. So everything under the B I D F right now, all those loans have um uh, how would you say they expired pretty much? They wouldn't default. All of these loans have found to be default, so they're no longer active and so forth. And so uh for us to verify what they say to enter cap, we're gonna have to start doing new loans, so to speak. And that's what he referred to in his report here. That's my understanding. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Um, maybe in the meantime, I'll take the committee's consent and spend, like, if you just provide us your recommendation and your advisement on um the request.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair and members of the committee, I can do that. Thank you.
Uh, we have two two questions on so I'll do the follow-up from Chair Patti and I'll advise you.
Uh, today, you know, I was just gonna add since Controller's Chair of the Investment Committee, uh this has been an ongoing. I think you dealt with this when you were the Director of Economic Development. Um, and so as a representative of the committee, should this loan program be, it should be functional under investment policies and outlook? If um if there was collusion in the past, and this is a long time, I'm not sure what the issues are. I think there's been several divisions or directors who tried to count this. We could also get recommendations on where's um what is the best place for this funding? And I think there's been, you know, other opportunities like change labs and some other partnerships. I did see that concerning others from the the Chamber of Commerce, so something's still happening. Uh, so I think if we could talk about what are some of those options, uh that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Chair and Professor Patti. Um, this is actually a current topic that we're having in the Investment Committee about the differences between direct investments and also loans in the past and how to update those uh investment policies for the Navajo Nation Master Investment Policy. Um, so I can give some time both to um Mr. McCabe on those updates, or I can give some time to Vice Chair Slater to answer, to kind of comment on the questions, because at the end of the day, the Budget and Finance Committee has that oversight over the Investment Committee also, um this these statuses. So this is a currently under um discussion at the Investment Committee, but especially if you want.
So, thank you. I guess my my question is to DOJ, if you can meet with Ms. Brown, you're saying that basically you can't, that you sanction without demonstrating through a cap, right, that you have rectified the issues. Rectifying the issue means that you're continuing the operation program. I I'm not speaking with the committee, but I think there's a lot of reluctance for us to continue with it in its current conception. It sounds like in the cap, there is O O C, uh D E D, um, I don't know, is M O V or something like this being developed? And that was news to be, I don't know if if you all were aware of that, uh because was it Chair Patti or was it Mr. Slater talking about moving over to the Investment Committee? And yeah, I think between S S B C I, um, the nation authorized alternative investments in the portfolio and has started to do so. I know the investment manager has done some labor, I mean, with different V C firms to figure out, you know, how that that investment we want to pursue, not necessarily doing V C, but looking at how we can do direct investments. Um, I I still think that there's very much a place for all investment options. And to me, you know, when you're doing debt investments, that's the way the mitigating will drift when you become equity investor, then you take a line with this. Um, so I I don't, I just think we need to have a whole suite of options available and 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 this needs to be incorporated in the investment side. And then I don't want to sidetrack against S S B C I, but if you could maybe provide a report to us since we haven't heard about it in a couple quite a few months. But on that point, I was talking to folks yesterday, coincidentally, and they just said, you know, there haven't been any loans set up yet. So um, I understand the framework is there, and I'm just curious to see in that report really what the timeline is, because as I said in the beginning, if we don't get that eighty percent, then there's no more money and it'd be horrible to see an adrenalin luxus not come to mind. So, thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Vice Chair Slater. I'll go to the controller to offer some comments and responses. Um, I don't think it off track of this report. This is a deeper drive that will have to go down with the S S B C I and on a different report and um this topic I can consider, I can deliver job or some comments uh to both Chair Patti and Vice Chair Slater.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Slater, Chair 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 Patti for the questions. And so the the two, the two kind of things that is to keep it brief is one, I know the B I D F, um as Chair of the Investment Committee, you know, we, I we we really haven't developed a lot directly with the B I D F. I know it falls under D E B. Um, I dealt with it when I was the Division Director in two thousand and eighteen. Um, frankly, I had an audit done, an external audit done, and um the findings of that audit were consistent with um my Chairman Auditor General was a source. The uncollectible nature of the assets held by the area. Um, so um, I do think that we need to, as the Investor Committee and this committee and the Controller, that is, that is sort of his, our corrective action plans and and we will turn B I D F and others, and I would be welcome from your office. Um, as far as S S B C I, I I do believe in that program. I think it's a great use of federal money to help our small businesses as well as continuing to drive economic development. But I do also recognize that um was the Controller that, you know, we need to make sure that's closely monitored as well, but also the Charity Investment Committee um figuring out ways that um the Navajo Nation could utilize its 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 own assets to continue to drive um economic development um at the local level, uh much the same way that S S B C I is designed to do. So um, I'll try and answer your questions. Uh, Chair, my question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I just, um, you don't, Mr. Horace, you don't need a response today, but we'll provide another time for response uh more in depth on the S S B C I. D E B is facing, but uh if you could provide some short comments back to Vice Chair Slater's questions.
Regarding the S S G T I or regarding the B I?
The report that I was requesting is just on, I yeah, S S B C I and then um I guess I'm written for about an update on the O O C and D E D.
Agreement.
Like give a draft of it, whatever you're talking.
So that's the, there's a, an agreement we'd like to take a look at um between the two. So, uh, Mr. Horace?
Okay, thank you, uh, committee members. I just want to reference uh the agreement's based upon CAP twenty-nine twelve Management Plan. And in that, it states the CFO shall maintain following duties and authorities, coordinate with O O C to manage the B I D F money. And uh another uh point there also is that B F, B I D F accounting, the records and books of account for the B I D F shall be kept separate from the Navajo Nation General Fund with its own balance sheet and revenue and expenditure statements. Day-to-day accounting shall be performed by the Office of the Controller in accordance with GAAP. So the the agreement will be based upon that. What what I've observed these past two years is that the division is is trying to do their accounting.
Mr. Horace, I'm trying to make it as on the topic, which is the sanction. So Vice Chair Slater should ask me first a quick responsible schedule and the time for your reports in the committee.
Sure, sure. So yes, the agreement is based upon that uh
Yeah.
officer is the um the uh CAP twenty-nine twelve Management Plan. That's gonna be consistent with them. And then as far as the S S B C I, yes, that is correct. No loans have been issued yet. Um, and Change Labs has received their seven million dollar uh set aside, and they are in the process of administering that program. And just for the record, we uh the division also received a one million dollar technical assistance grant award from uh U S Treasury so that we can provide uh technical assistance to Navajo entrepreneurs, and we're going through the implementation of that program.
Mr. Horace responding to the questions, members of the committee. Does anyone else have any questions there?
This would be just the recommendation that we add this item to our leadership meeting with R I C for um and and it's up to the committee too, if it's just working with oversight of the leader type. But if we wanted just to provide a summary to how we get here to the whole council or committees or whatever, um, now there's um maybe that it would something that we plan. I'm just thinking of the upcoming budget, um, because we would just need support from our colleagues to understand the dynamics of what's happening across Navajo Nation, making such general funds. Uh, and I'm sure there's gonna be a whole whole usurpation when we start going over the federal borders or the external trends. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Chair Patti. Members of the committee, does anyone else have any questions for the board today? All right, here now, Mr. Tapi, you just know that is our recommendation for our meeting with R I C. Thank you. Thank you to uh Ms. Brown, to our Division Directors of National Resources, and also Mr. Horace should be here for Division of Economic Development, Ms. Bolzowski and Mr. McCabe. Uh, the committee has no further questions at the time of this time of the report, so I will go to a recall vote to accept the report on uh from our Auditor General and the presenters. Delegate affirmative vote, delegate on the screen, delegate Sharon Goss, it's huge, and this vote, she stepped away. Um, Chair and Professor Patti, I love, I'm just very, very Chair and Professor Patti on the screen and uh else you have the type of, that's here. Delegate also has a vote screen and Vice Chair Patti, Carl Slater kind of. I just combined your.
It's time, it's time brother to say right here.
Uh, Vice Chair Carl Slater. You have four members voting affirmative, there are votes, I'm voting in on versus, so much is carried, thank you. We're gonna move on to our second report. Members of the committee, uh written report was handed out to everyone. Written on the floor, written memorandum from our W D Controller, Mr. Rob Willie. Um, it's on the first five-year uh C A P nineteen sixteen expenditure rates and some other of the committee, this was uh part of the agenda to give you all uh a practice of the expenditure rates to dates. Um, and what happens today's format, uh my recommendation is here to the Controller's office, I'm expecting you to accept this as a written report and go to the deeper detail within bringing forth the Division of Economic Development and the Division of Water Management. Just check out one of these projects. Over, I leave it to you, um, how you would like to read, uh proceed with the report. So members of the committee, would you all like to hear me? All right, members of the committee with our two controllers, uh Controller Sean D, where's your? We're all, all examples of motion, so I'm sure every member of our party on the report, uh this committee, I think you have sent it to the report. Uh, delegate not going to be staying, members of the committee, are there any questions on the report? Would that, uh, to fill in the pages, because I would be regarded as a All right, we'll go to Chair and Professor Patti.
Oh, wait, did you say?
I didn't know if you wanted to hear from him first, but if not, that's okay.
Oh, I can hear from him. Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead and go to John McCabe.
John McCabe, pleasure.
We saw you, but I don't know if I started doing work, so. It's safe there.
At least I was away.
Okay. Don't look your eyes.
Yeah, um. Thank you, Chair Harris and Chair Patti for what. So uh, per request in the committee, um, Robert, Mr. Willie, um put together this report, uh which I reviewed and also signed off on to um give the committee an idea of permanent trust on interest at stake in months. Um, and so what this was before is designed to do to give you uh an overview and then some detailed exhibits behind the actual memo. Um, I can go to the memo now. Um, so Mr. Willie is reporting that the first uh five-year plan was under C A P nineteen dash sixteen. Um, and that plan was designed to fund economic development projects, agriculture projects, and water projects over time. Um, and that plan was designed to fund economic development projects, agriculture projects, and water projects over a plan of, um, um, any of, uh, permanent trust fund interests in excess would go to the general fund to support, um, the general fund budget, uh, on an annual basis over those five years. Um, what we do is we then break down and do overview and dedicate, um, under CAP nineteen sixteen, uh, the type, uh, the, the expenditure by type, uh, in that first allocation. Um, I can, uh, uh, from a, sorry, from a, uh, summary basis, the economic development projects that were approved under that, uh, CAP nineteen sixteen, I had a total revised budget of fifty-six point five-five million to be used on economic development projects. Over that five-year span, thirty-six point eight of that was used. Um, there's still a, a result, um, sorry, um, current balance of encumbrances of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand and a remaining budget under that CAP nineteen sixteen of nineteen point four-five-six million, which is monies that are still within, um, the permanent trust fund interest that weren't expended under that first, uh, legislation for, uh, the usage of that, uh, permanent trust fund interest. Uh, moving on, agriculture projects under that legislation, um, had a budget set up for twelve million dollars. Uh, seven point nine of that was spent with encumbrances remaining of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So there's roughly three point six million dollars remaining in that allocation, uh, left for agriculture projects. Um, and it sounds like there is still a remaining amount of two million dollars that has not been set up as agricultural projects. So to add to that remaining budget, um, making the remaining budget, uh, five point six six forty-five oh one. Uh, finally, uh, water projects, uh, under that legislation were set up as sixty-eight point two-five oh million as a budget. Uh, the amount of thirty-eight point, thirty-five point eight-two-nine million was expended. Um, there's an amount of five point one million incumbent remaining and a remaining budget of twenty-seven point two-nine million. So, um, the report here is to show you that, under that, at least in that first five-year plan, uh, which looks like it took place in twenty sixteen, um, and was in effect through twenty twenty, um, there, uh, the expenditure rate is roughly, um, seventy percent of the, I mean, it varies by project, but roughly seventy percent of the allocation made under that legislation. So, um, I think that's consistent honestly with what we see in the general fund budget from year to year as far as operating expenditures. Um, and tables and exhibit B, which is behind the report, uh, shows the next allocation, which is, um, the allocation that we're currently in. Um, and projects in that year one totaled sixteen point three-six-one million. Uh, an amount was then sent to the general fund of twenty-two point nine million. In year two, projects totaled thirty point nine million and ten point eight million went to the, um, general fund for operating, supplement operating costs. In year three, thirty point five million, uh, was used for projects and nineteen point eight million was transferred to the general fund. Uh, year four, total thirty million five hundred and an amount nineteen million one seventy was transferred to the general fund. And year five projects totaled thirty million five hundred with twenty-five hundred four seven transferred to the general fund. Um, under CMY forty twenty, there was an amount reallocated from the permanent trust fund interest of four million dollars to, to Normandy Gates, Seastore, to Hodgeley. And, um, in addition, CB eighty-five eighteen reduced the Indian Wells project to one million dollars while it was funded recently. Uh, and then the last legislation, um, CAP twenty-three twenty-one rescinded CB eighty-five eighteen. So, and we have re-invested, re-instituted, the Indian Wells project to the three point seven million original allocation. Um, and physically year twenty twenty-one, after that first, uh, cap was passed, uh, the council passed CAP thirty twenty-one. Um, and in this plan, uh, the plan looked to just to fund forty million dollars to the general fund. And then, um, as we all know, whatever excess permanent trust fund interest under this current five-year plan is then available for the council for unmet needs. And if you recall, under this budget that was passed yesterday and the numbers that we looked at for this, what is going to be the segment to last year of the current, uh, five-year plan? Um, and why the committee, I think, is asking this is because we're going to have to do this over again for fiscal twenty-six. Um, and, uh, as I think, where I was going with this is, I think you recall, uh, there was a projected total permanent trust fund interest of sixty-two million, out of which, um, the council allocated less than the forty million um, to, to get for the CR. And then the rest of it fell to permanent trust fund excess, which was then available for unmet needs, which I know the council awarded some of those from, uh, the UUFB, or I guess we can use that as permanent trust fund interest to, uh, yesterday. Um, through some amendments. Um, so there is a bunch of detail behind it that you can review at your, your leisure that show the various projects that fell under these, um, legislative allocations. Um, and then for whatever questions you need to, to me, or if you see anything, uh, I can answer questions now. Um, with that in mind, Chair, that's, uh, that's our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela McCabe. I will go to Chairman Everclass for a question. We're going to move into the second one's report.
Well, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, so I know it takes a whole day for the committee to get an update on the individuals who are and have been funded. Uh, Controller, my question is, in terms of the committee, how do you recommend that we continue to monitor all these programs? Uh, some of them have been funded nine years ago. And so looking at that first crop of economic development projects that looks like, um, of the sixty million, there's still nineteen point four million. At what point, um, do we need to reconsider because how the market has changed since sixteen? And that only like if there's shortfalls in these projects? The other area that I wanted to, um, have a conversation on is have we ever looked back on the, um,
Yeah.
on the, um, uh, that our investment into these, um, projects? And so looking at the different hotels and shopping center, I just want to make sure are we, is the nation, so I'm assuming, you know, we'll get sales tax, possibly, uh, business lease. But at what point and how do we, how do, how do we create a metric to know that it, it's, it's a good investment, but I also understand the dynamic of rural community? So I want to counter that with, you know, the, the services that are provided to the communities, like dogs and whatnot. But some of these now have gone to, um, like I know the Shantou Hotel is now being run by, uh, I don't know, uh, a large hotel chain. So I'm not sure if we're undercutting the possibilities in what have entered into an agreement, let's say, of Navajo confidentiality or to maximize our enterprises so that we're building a, you know, that capability across Navajo Nation? Because when I look at hotels, like exactly in Alcatraz, I think they have this whole chain called like Heritage Hotels. It's like this whole experience, but they're basically co-opting our culture for their benefit, right? They're doing all, they're doing tours to Taco, they're doing tours to Monument Valley. And, um, so I just don't understand that at what point a hospitality can, you know, has that plan or that's a plan we should consider, uh, because I don't complain hotels still have some challenges. Uh, I do see that, uh, Shiprock Hotels going up and that's a hospitality. But I just wanted to see then what's, what's the opportunity cost that we're missing with at least that first phase of economic development projects? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Everclass and Carty. Now, thank you Vice Chairman Casey Allen Johnson for being here as well today. Thank you. Then again, Vice Chair, oh, sorry, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
I agree to all the more. Uh, awesome interview.
And I would like to share.
Um, thank you again for this, um, or sorry, this, um, the, the last report I need to get to vote. So that even on the head. Um, but on this report that you're providing, I know it, it does show my, one of my chapters. Um, this is the, um, Indian Wells project, where it started with a former delegate, um, Jack, and also another delegate, Amber McGee. And, um, right now, the other things that I have is that it took a long time for the Indian Wells chapter to get this project up and going because I have to deal with, um, electric with ITUA. And so that took many years to really get this K V land approved by the community because they needed additional information from ITUA. And so, um, the lawyers, when I came in last year, the community finally got all the information that they needed. Felt comfortable, um, in this world, but in this industry, which is really important, as I'm a gal, I'm a um, of their new medical center, and they want to grow the community, they want to grow. Um, so Indian Wells, uh, like their project have been held hostage because of that one other project. And now they're ready to move forward. And some of the things that they have, um, tried to do is meet with, um, the Department of Economic Development to start bringing in a program manager to work with them. Now they've also, um, with this three point seven million, I, they know because of the way the market has gone, it's not going to be enough. So I just want to, um, I'll put something together and I'll email it to you. And then I want to figure out how we could, um, bring in my, um, chapter leadership to kind of figure out what they want to do and how to move forward. Actually, something I want to put out there, but, um, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Sharon, and I see members of the committee who have any questions for Controller and Gena. Uh, one question to Controller and some comments about Delegate Dossi. So, good luck in the future.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Parrish and Chair Carty. Honorable Delegate Dossi for your questions. Um, so I'll address, um, Chair Carty's first. Um, so, um, the, the permanent, a- 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 as you all know, the permanent trust fund was set up and designed to hold a principal balance um, in perpetuity that was only usable by reference with Navajo people. However, we were given the ability to use the interest off of the permanent trust fund to, for council allocation. Uh, so I know the first effort that you're seeing this list on shows a bunch of projects that were approved under the first allocation. And if, if you start to look at in detail, there are several projects, particularly in the economic development category, that still have yet to be started or any, if very little, uh, expenditures to date. Um, and if you continue to look at the projects, uh, in agriculture and water, um, you can kind of see where a lot of these projects still hold several million dollars, uh, open budget, where projects are either unfinished or even not started. So, um, I'm glad the committee is considering this, look, looking into this because I believe this is consistent with the citizen fund as well as far as projects that have been approved, but very little has been done with the money. Um, I do believe it, it should, um, warrant a conversation between the committee, um, the Office of Controller and even leadership executives, if, if, if they want to come to the table, um, to really start looking at a feasible plan at the next, um, uh, five-year plan for permanent trust fund interest. Because the fact of the matter is, um, and I think the committee is aware of this, is the one bright spot in revenue generation on Navajo Nation right now is the way our portfolios are performing and the interest that comes off of our general fund investments and our permanent trust fund. Um, quite frankly, other than that, there's very little, uh, other revenue coming, generated in new forms coming to the Navajo Nation. And a very, we, we need to start really, uh, considering this, this fact going forward. Um, so where I'm going with that, Chair, is I think the committee in the next five-year plan needs to consider the real operating needs of the general fund, um, but also look for investment into, um, council, uh, well, leadership priorities, um, because the fact is there, there's more and more interest incoming in our current markets. Um, and it's something we need to really take a look at. What I, what I would advise against, um, though, and this is kind of goes to the Delegate Dossi's question as well. Um, and, 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 and Delegate Carty, you, you asked how, how we look back to see how some of these are performing. Frankly, we, we don't, there's no mechanism to, to look back at some of these completed projects. And I think that's where Navajo has to change its way in front of where we invest in economic development type activity because unless it's in an enterprise fashion, meaning we get, we're the owner and we get a piece of the profit. The only real revenue generation that comes off the profit is a savings tax, which even that is kind of shaky if you ask Effie, um, at Tax Commission. So, a true return on investment in taxes isn't, isn't really done. And, and we should probably start to think that. So, so going, going to, to Delegate Dossi's comments, um, and really just to kind of, I think, um, there needs to be more of a vetting process when we consider investments like this. I know the last five-year plan was different than the first one, meaning there wasn't specific projects allocated to it. It was more of a, the general fund takes forty million and when excess is used for general or for the council priorities. Um, I do think there is more need in the general fund, uh, particularly in repairs and maintenance of current assets. Um, and so that's something that I know I've kind of brought to the attention of the attention I spoke to the executive about as well, um, being honest about the budgets, are realistic, um, and really considering what revenue generation can support that. And one of the, again, the bright spots is how a lot of portfolios are performing just because of the rates are. And I, and I have reported in the past that that wasn't always the case, you know, during COVID, the entire market crash, not crash, but it taints. And our, our audited hit on value of the portfolio was eight hundred and fifty million dollars. And so that's stuff that we have to continue to watch because absent of new, real economic development revenue generation, we're going to rely pretty heavily on our interest performance, at least until we can get a plan, uh, to, to talk about how we're generating. But to end that, I would suggest we take a hard look at these projects plus the citizen money, um, because our, our projects in there that are kind of simple, they're allocated and never started on very good. And I know that's been a priority. Communities, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCabe. I just want to, if you don't have the interest today of how the committee can best monitor the questions or monitor the projects, I think that's where the committee had a lot of questions about, um, investments to the communities. And we have to assess that when these, when this, when these legislations were put together in two thousand and sixteen, at the time, we don't know if proper assessment was done for the investments. On board, there was just, you know, a list of projects that everybody commented on the floor. And here we can go back to the legislation history on that. Uh, however, um, being prudent with these dollars, because there's no movement, we, the committee's asking for your advisement on how to better assess these allocations. And then as you move forward, um, we're going to be discussing the permanent trust fund. And the future of what that looks like in regards to our budget. So, continued conversation that will help. Um, so great questions from the committee, all the questions. Maybe any other questions? Uh, Sharon, have any?
Chair Carty? Yes. Uh, thank you. So my question is, when we have, when we have, um, because of coming from the permanent trust fund and so the, the investment coming, are you monitoring the questions that I'm asking? Are you going back to the projects and using the income? I'm not sure, unless there's a five-year plan, that money that would go back into the principal. And so what I'm looking at is you, you know, with the nineteen. And so what I'm looking at is, you know, with the 19.4 billion dollars, would, would it give us a suggestion that that shouldn't be clocked back? And I know that communities will always say, well, they're irritated. But then there's a conversation about, okay, how do we, if it's taking nine years, would we learn from that? And, and these numbers would need to change if it's not completed. If even if it's not completed, it looks like the championship readiness door was over. So who's gonna pay for, who's gonna, how are we gonna, how are we gonna balance out that budget there? That 79K or 69? 78? There needs a number to say something about. And so, and I would also want to know in terms of regions, how we're benefiting. Because every region doesn't think they're getting support from the council. And so I would also, how we combine those state projects is really just through the dynamic. Like what are the, what are the, like, how are we mapping this out? What are considered like the first or the primary economic zones? What are considered the second? Because, like, I never know why gaming built two casinos in northern, like, less than 20 miles away from each other. So there's one at Water Smog and there's one at Northern Edge. And the only thing I can think of is at that time is political influence. And so that can't be the way we move forward. That has to be, I would hope some like, some data to say, okay, this is the best practice, but compare that with what we need a challenging world coming. So we have opportunities. I'm always looking at, now we got with water pipelines coming in, we're going to need large industries there to utilize that water. We're looking at other water settlements that are coming in, the broadband extension. And the Utah water. And I'm just glad that we didn't use permanent trust fund interest to invest in that glove factory. But there has to be things that we, there have to be things that we look back on and as investment, maybe you've only invested in gaming. And so that has a long history. So I mean, I've just looked for some dynamics and I'm sure there are top-notch people out there that could give us some guidance and are not the paid volunteer, you know, and we were looking at being pressured to purchase like the ranchers. Napa Pike Ranch, right, and then we're going to do a land swap. Or however they pitched this Colorado ranch. And now we know it's just a money pit. So we have to have like these conversations. So that's what I would like to know for the next five years, if I'm going to consider economic development. I have a few other questions. So let me segue, we want to answer that before I segue into agriculture. And I have another question regarding, because I appreciate the report, but I would also just like a breakdown. If the focus was just on projects, this is a great report. But after cap 3021, I would just like a breakdown in terms of what years we used the interest and how much? And then what was the recommendation and what happened to those dollars? Because, because it goes back to, we're just putting that income into U U S B, I hope not. Because I don't think that meets the requirement. Well, I'm not sure. So I'll look at cap 3021. So I just even know how much was used in the general fund and then how much was considered excess? And then where that money went? Because if it's just floating around, it might have been better for leadership to agree to put that back into the principal if our people were doing better. And that could be on a year-by-year basis, but those are just my questions that I'm asking from the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Eberth, Delegate Karin, Controller and Kaye. We'll move on back to you. So we have all the information today. If you don't have the information today, this, I think, Mr. Dossi, this is going to require a leadership meeting to break down the permanent trust fund, which is what we're supposedly meeting on every other week, right? So if we can get back to any, the people's partners. I think what would be helpful to Chair Karin is at the beginning of this year, we sat down and said we'd meet on the permanent trust fund every other week. And we haven't yet to meet every other week on the permanent trust fund. So these are every set of questions that we can sort of, the time that we set aside in our calendars Wednesday afternoon. So I'll allow the Controller to comment on what he knows today and then how we can recommend, how we recommend to move forward. Controller?
Thank you, Chair. And Chair Karin, she happy. There are sure Parish is right, I don't have a lot of answers, but we can definitely for example, I don't. So I know since the first allocation and the current five-year plan, red, the general answer is the general fund has taken that 40 million that's allocated and used it for the budget. We can probably get answers of each budget legislation as to how access was used going back to 2021. Because that's really where you would allocate as a council. Going, you know, if there wasn't projected permanent trust fund interest. Then when that money's not spent, I believe the policy is such that it just can be invested back in the council. Yeah, to gain more interest. But we can, we can, as Chair Parish mentioned, maybe maybe go that more detail. Especially to help plan for the next one, because it's kind of and just the general comments I made on your first question, actually not that, is one that the, I, I, I think that Navo Nation needs to discuss at the leadership level what the true revenue generating capabilities are of the Navo Nation. Because I think we get sold on projects where we're told, oh, it's going to create jobs, which I know is a a hopeful goal, but from a revenue standpoint, you know, just to give you an example, I know cities and states will promote tax benefits and stuff to bring businesses in because they know on the backend, they make up a lot of that money through state income taxes with jobs created and then also grocery receipts taxes. The Navo Nation doesn't have a Navo Nation income tax. So jobs created, well, it's a great social, but it doesn't create a lot of income. Because the fact is also a lot of the income paid to the people with those newly created jobs goes to the workers. So we miss out on the G R Ts. So the true revenue generation capability for a lot of these economic development projects by in our 6% sales tax and then in various other reuse taxes, such as if there's a lease involved or other types of business activities that might generate it. But, you know, I think sometimes we, we listen to particularly with some of our enterprises. And I know because I'm getting frustrated with one in particular, where they're constantly asking for money and nothing's coming back. And they keep wanting to say, oh, we're creating jobs. I'm like, I did it, man, but we've invested hundreds of millions of dollars in this. And right now, it's kind of back. And that's just the economics. I mean, I'm not trying to be political, that's just what it is. And as the Chair of the Investment Committee, we oversee that. I'm not going to mention the enterprise, but I think you all can catch what's going on. So I think we, and by the way, I was I was Chair of the gaming enterprise when we invested in our student signals. And I know the answer, you can talk.
That Britney Spears, that's wearing a shirt on Monday.
Didn't they owe us the, they made those mischievous?
Yes. So the good news is when we re- redid the loan, we've guaranteed cash flow back to the nation in the form of the gaming distribution fund requirements and also approved and future incomes. So we are sending cash flow back that we haven't seen since really the operating.
So they have started.
Well.
They owe us, but I mean, I think if it's fair for you to put, I'm sorry. You kind of get it out there, but like, how did they start paying that to people? They just think we're sitting on a ham spot.
To be clear, they did get deferral principal payments. But interest payments are being made up and keeping current as well with the gaming distribution fund responsibility. Which they weren't doing since basically the dependence.
So can you send us a third contact? And then it'd just be a written report at this time and then we can make sure that Mr. Taki has a copy of that.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the committee.
Yes, ma'am.
But all right, the committee members have questions on the third chair. I guess answer all your
Oh, wait, I didn't have a possible. There's a P O for meanings. So what I would like to just know is who's the responsible entities for these projects? If you don't have that, let us know who would have that. And then if we, because we would have every quarter, like, holding, you know, getting updates. That would be helpful for the economic development project. I wanted to talk about the agriculture project briefly. I would need to know I know you lost a vote for for weight. No, that was different. So the agriculture project, I would also want to know, there's like, oh, best practice or meat tricks to fund these projects? We don't know the future of federal funding. But N R C S has told us every year, like, she allocates $10 million to Navo Nation for agriculture projects. And we just never drawn down or entered the funding that I've been at. So I'm just looking ways to, if we look at the next five-year plan, you know, like the extension, so our five. So I just even know who is a kind of contact like for northern agency agriculture project. Because there's two of them. I think it's Kurt. He's the one who always given them it. So I just, I just want to know what's like the next five-year plan for them in favor of what it would be nine years ago. And I just wanted to talk briefly then about the water projects. At this time, this was, you know, this was pretty arto, this was like a big investment with the Stanos Day Fund. And so, let's see, so agriculture, so 3.6 million of water projects, then we won't even draw down 60%. So to the question we asked, who Department of Water Works is? Is to give us a breakdown if any of these, because I know at one time we told them to cross reference or to use ARCA dollars. So I just don't know if we've been able to use ARCA dollars on any of these projects. And that's why they're not spending down. So if there were, if there were a way that we could ask that question and give that information, that would be helpful for these water projects. I'm looking at some of them. Like, we also need them, like, I don't know if the Lake Powell project, and your course would be it? And what do we do with that surplus? And should we claw it back and put it back to be available in the next five years? I guess I'm just looking at where all this funding is kind of going. Or if it goes back to the principal and also find another. Let's forget the next five-year plan. The last question, hopefully when we start having more, is that conversation, is that nature? According to your projection, annually in our bin, if next year, because if this will year 27, you should adjust the pay reduction in revenue just on your projection? Then how should we start looking at with the five years of beef and the permanent trust fund? Should we just focus on getting through the next five years? Also because we don't know what's going on with the federal government? How conservative should we be to make sure that the government is running? But also, you know, if there's opportunities to maximize or, or maybe there's is it a better opportunity to keep any of that possible money and just keep it invested? But all we think is, I know that we made money off of our investment, but we're, we're not investing in our community. So with all these moves, it's for me. And there could be a way that we could invest in our community. And then whatever that looks like, so that we are the owners and the operators. But governments doesn't do that well. And so it's like working with the enterprises. And looking at, because when we had a meeting with President, we heard about some revenue that would be coming in. Maybe tell me. This is what we heard, or the committee heard. Revenue was the hydrogen pipeline possible. And check with their 100 megawatt roofings. I think we just received the first installment, but it wasn't 7 million. And then we added a committee. Like, how, how do we look at the permanent trust fund in the five-year plan? So I just, I just think that all of this, which includes if the interest, if those could be to support the government with the loss of generated revenue, like N G S. Because I don't have to consider like the peak scale and everything else to keep the, to keep the government running. I'm just not saying one. The next thing that came up was should this be the year, we consider this, should this be the year that you move away from protection? That our U U S B is very company? And just move forward with revenue that we have currently to budget? And I don't know what the terms are. So that would be some of my questions and what could be asked of now? And if not, will there be questions that we could continue in this discussion with permanent trust fund? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Eberth, Delegate Karin. Mr. Taki, could you just have a quick questions? Because this goes to the discussions with that committee. We have the, the hot-waisted conversation the committee has stated in our meetings and internally, you'll view is, I think this to your budget concept or multiple of your budget concept can be a rising, so we should take a look at our options. With considerations with the revenues that are going into the nation. Certainly if you have responsive questions, if you don't, then we can revisit them at a certain time. If you're not prepared today to answer this.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think I can provide a little bit now, but I think it does warrant a deeper discussion with the committee. The first comment I made is your question about the oversight of these projects, water, the agriculture. I would defer the last to the D M R as the oversight. And of course, E B as of I do believe that we actually should look immediately into and overlap with some of this water funding. This funding off of the water projects, some of the first allocation that may have been done in purple because there is immediate callback implications. If there is overlap and those projects are being formed in the ARCA. That again, it will refer to Mr. John's long research to see if that is, if there is an overlap there. You know, you asked about the permanent trust fund, which is a great tool to preserve the principal and use the interest. But the concept of leveraging that stuff, I know is something that we've had before. And there's a very real discussion that needs to be had on how, again, what I reported before and how we make Navo Nation assets work for us in the terms of the investment performance to leverage debt to accomplish real projects. I think our, our custom is to get funding and then just fight for it. Where I think we could change the way we look at it and utilize those assets to generate income to then leverage and make projects happen. My last couple of comments, because again, I think a lot of this can be dealt with in detail. The, the comments on the revenue coming in, I, I have heard and had a couple of discussions with O P V P on hydrogen, which I think is a very real revenue generating potential. But my question would be, what is the investment in it and the timeframe to actually make it a realizable income? I guess it would be timely and very expensive to, to generate possibly to start capitalizing on the revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know the NTEC answer, whatever revenue they're talking about there. Uh in Goldings, I do know they did make a. Paying like three million dollars, I think it's our first payment on the seven. And we did get that, and that's our least payment on the pin. Uh we did get that, it's been within the last seven. Um. And, oh, and your question about projections, uh now, maybe you think that that's something the committee should look at sooner than later. Um because uh I've been. I've been accused of being too conservative with the revenue projections, which I don't believe we're doing. Um I believe that we're being responsible with the projection, but I do know that and do think that. We need to relook at how we budget, including closer monitoring of budget to actual. Um I've always been a, um a. Someone who would say instead of using our projection, we use some actual analysis of either revenue. Generated in the past five years or even actual expenditures, because as we know. We're not spending a full general fund balance, so I can project whatever number I want. But the actual performance is a lot different um analysis. So uh I, I, I would wanna issue, especially because we're gonna start this budget again in thirty days. Thirty one days, I would really wanna have that conversation sooner than later with the committee. If we're gonna change the way we. The base planning amount and how we formulate that, because right now, as you know, it's based on a projection. Um and one of the things I mentioned to Chair Parrish yesterday was, uh. I have requested the twenty twenty four adjusted trial balance from our audit prep, so I can give you all a look back of an actual revenue performance. Which I kinda did before the report, but I, we never really got into, I think you accepted it as written. Um but it paints a picture such that. Out if you, if you net out our revenue sources, if you net out income from the investments. It does paint a flat, if not slightly declining revenue picture. So there could be a time where our permanent or general fund investments don't perform the way they are now. Uh and we're looking at other revenue sources that's flat or slightly declining, not because taxes, royalties and others, and we all know. About some of the potential of the closings of. The uh in mine up north and the implication of that, so. Well, I'm not prepared to tell you that I can predict a revenue. Increase in twenty seven, I can tell you that based on what we, I've seen over the past audited revenue numbers. It's certainly not going up either, so. That's why, as unpopular as it is, I've always recommended let's keep. Base planning amount as conservative as we can. Not trying to, you know, politically strap any division, but. We, we do need to be a little bit cautious because. What really alarmed me was that twenty twenty two reported loss on the permanent, on the investment of eight hundred fifty one dollars. Which we've since recovered, but that gives you an idea of how volatile that part, that, that performance can be, and we have to make sure we. Um we take that into consideration. And so I, I really don't have that conversation with the committee about how we. Formulate that baseline amount, not sure, thank you Chair.
If Laura and Kate responding to the committee, what is your timeframe to be prepared to have this discussion?
It's me tomorrow. Um. We can have it soon, I already have the, the look back on revenue. Um like I said, I, cause I gave it to you, you, you didn't, I can update it with the twenty four numbers, cause I have those now. Um but I pretty much didn't do that right away, as far as the analysis on. These projects within uh that we presented, uh. Again, I, we may need some time, because I don't, we've never really done a return on the same analysis on the revenue, so. We probably have to give the divisions to those, um but uh a uh. A discussion on. Um any revenue uh. Potential that's been reported to the committee as far as hydrogen and technical rulings. And then any consideration from how we uh formulate a base planning, we can add that discussion. In that separate weeks, in the middle of the committee. Um desires, I, I've already prepared.
Uh if you can, if you're over the committee, does anyone else have any questions? Right?
I did while working up for this um comprehensive and it's good, that's why we wanted um OPVP books on the line. Uh even extending out to judicial, so that we completely understand what are the factors coming up to the next wonder and how we're gonna move forward. I wanted to talk about enterprise dividends. Because that wasn't discussed in terms of revenue, so if you could just help, um maybe the last either five or ten years. Um what have been any of the enterprises, what have the. What has been their dividend back to the Navo Nation? You know, maybe some have a requirement or a degree that like for scholarships. But what actually are the, are the? Going to the general funds? And if it goes into scholarship, that's fine, we could just understand that. Some of them, I know like NTEC, they manage their community um benefit portfolio. But it's only like a quarter of a million dollars for the whole year. They, they do other things if you ask them, um should be that this isn't seem realistic with uh with the revenue that were. Um their profits. And when I asked about a dividend to that enterprise, they mentioned because of. Their bonding. They do not. They're prohibited from providing dividends to the nation. And there. Maybe this everything? Well. I don't need to share my personal video, uh but whoever the mouth get them asked of. I, I think if we could just get drilled down onto that, um I think there was a conversation on what that dividend would look like. And I think that would be helpful and then we'll know like what A D and the other enterprises are providing. Uh it doesn't sound like D D C provides any type of dividend unless it's a voluntary basis. But just also looking at their audits and their profits, uh there, there should be some balance in terms of how we diversify our portfolio. Uh I don't think we have a lot of, even if we're to go into an income tax, I'm not sure what that would look like. Maybe that would just be good to identify, I think like prior to being a delegate, we look at. How much federal tax the Navo Nation pays in total, so that would be like income and donation. It's, it's a substantial amount, so maybe that would be something that you can look at, I don't know, somebody just has to look at. Because D D B no longer um. Creates that, was it an annual report on economic development and that's how we, we knew at that time, maybe fifteen years ago, we were. Would tell us like, you know, seventy cents of every dollar is due to our donation. But it was just kind of building up, how do we build up our economy? Like now, is Navo Nation when we're, when we're spending first of that, but so we're looking at travel. And I'm going back and forth, should I, should I stay at Salt River because they're uh kind of nation? Or, you know, another entity, and I'm thinking. Why don't I have a list of Navo? I don't even know if there's a Navo out there who owns. I, there's some really well off Navos, like what login opportunities are in. You know, in the Arizona community, so I think if we just start tightening that up a little bit, that's kind of more long range. But if we could just get some interns or someone to start looking at this information, I think that would be helpful. Even if it's like a Navo own like Airbnb, Airbnb, we, we have, I know that we have Navos that are some of their top management. And um they continue to support uh D E I initiatives, and so that could be something that we look at, thank you.
Thank you, um Chair Friday.
Wait, Chair, thank you Chair Friday. Um I would say, uh, let, let's just put together that report that looks back ten years on the enterprises. Um because I can't really comment what a lot of the history has been, but I can tell you. Uh most recently, there, there are some consistent dividends by some of the enterprises. What I will say, um. Is there's nothing that I'm aware of that's required in dividend, but they're based on performance. Uh and the, the dividends that we've received, uh. Uh when you take into consideration how big the general fund budget is, they're, they're pretty small. Um some of them are in the millions unless, I'm not saying it's wrong, right, I'm different. Um I don't know of the NTEC um restrictions on dividends. Um distribution, but I do know there's others like uh, like D D C, I know they, they perform. Um but they're a, they're a contractor and there are restrictions on how much profit you can bring to the bottom line on a made a contractor. Normally it's three percent. So if a company like D D C are generating, let's say a hundred million dollars of revenue. Um they can only bring down a small percentage back to the bottom line, which is then available to the Navo Nation as a dividend. Uh distribution, so um yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly what they've given to us, but that's something we can figure there. Um and the other, the other ones I, I just, I don't know. Yeah, oh, the other only thing I would mention is, um. This is also something I'm trying to solve at our thing, because um. As we all, um. Review the annual audit. Um we get an adverse opinion on our, our government wide financials because. The Navo Nation does not uh report its component units, which is the enterprises. Um. The answer I know mechanically as, as a former auditor and that mechanically including those in our balance sheet as equally. Um is easy, but we don't get the audited statements, at least the material ones from the enterprises on a time basis, because we have. Varying uh. Uh fiscal years. Um I do know, having done these audits myself, that we can talk to K P M G about just disclosing that these fiscal years are different. Or it might be something that the Navo Nation would consider putting everyone in the same fiscal year, because. You know, we, we, we need to, we need to, we're, we're not in compliance with GAAP, that's why we have adverse. Um but the reason why I bring this up is if those component units who reported. Our financials, you get a better look every year of what dividends, what performances and the component events that we just don't have right now. Um and we have to request those information, that information, as you know, sometimes we're told. By the price, they can't give you that information, which I think is ludicrous, but we've definitely been given that answers. And I know that because we were requesting financials so we could calculate the revenue loss. And there were at least long enterprise out, I said, you can't see that. So just, just to bring that up.
That's why I said that.
Uh yeah, I didn't want to name it.
All right. Uh thank you, and uh the reason why I was asking about the dividend is because maybe it won't. Um. You know, help us like diversifying, but if we're gonna look at investing in our youth or college students. Um they have reported the scholarship office, so maybe like twenty million more dollars. So that could, right, like that could be something that would be like the first base, or if there's dividend. That could go into. You know, a fund that goes into supporting these efforts. Because every year we have to supplement at different levels. But we also need policies for them to let us know, you know, what is the impact, so. If um the scholarships are being issued, I think that readiness has. Some other ways, but that's where I'm learning the dividend, it would just be good to know what, how we can maximize. And the last thing, kind of resulting that, so we have a transition cost on our fixed costs, um in the budget. And um. We're paying over a million dollars every year for this transition line. Who at what point is going to develop a plan to actually? Create some opportunity there so that the nation can benefit from that transition line, uh I think since N G S close eight years? Eight, nine years ago, we've been paying on this line, and so at what point, I mean. I just feel like it's a subscription that nobody uses, so what are we gonna do with that, that's. That's something that can maximize, or do we need as a committee recommend? Um. If we're just waiting on the division, they may not have the capacity to do it, I don't know if the investment committee wants to look at it or if you're per view. Uh I don't understand C E D, because we, we already has that. Experience with on the F R S party and everything out behind me, so if you could let me know, thank you.
Um we will, Mr. Tani, you just know that that's in our fixed costs, um I mean, that's that, so if you can respond.
Yes, Chair, thank you, and thank you Chicago, so first on the scholarships, um. Those are primarily funded through uh actually interest. Um there's been set aside from uh the portfolio of the scholarships. Um so I think that's the conversation that we can have as far as allocating more interest to it, and this was something I actually. Communicated to Delegate James when he introduced the unmet need for two million yesterday. Basically said, hey, this must be like one time, two million dollars, I think we need to actually have a bigger conversation on how to allocate more scholarships. Through the current sorts of revenue, just off of the portfolio. Um as far as transmissions costs, I know, um.
I'm gonna go about this chair side.
On, on your Excel spreadsheet, it shows there's a two million dollar set aside each year. Not off the portfolio, but off of the, the, the rep, all revenues to nation, like the set aside two. And then there's like Tucson Gas Electric and then these other different companies that do have scholarship funds, and they have interesting kind of, because of building there. Can you, I mean, I mean, that's important, because. It's not like a fixed percentage, we do assume a million.
Are you asking a better person than I am?
Well, you're saying that it's interest income, and that is from there, but instead of the revenue set aside. Which would change how we, I'm just saying, I, I think it does.
We're getting extra questions on this, so the budget, so um. I just wanted to, I think a lot of share topic questions are based on return on investment. So how are you, I have ten thousand dollars and it's a different, regardless. It is actual investment income, then is this investment still pretty satisfied, is that? What's the return on investment for that, so you are okay?
Um, uh yeah, thank you Chair, so we're quickly to ask your question, um. The, the funding of this scholarship is actually multiple sources, but the biggest. One of the biggest as far as direct uh scholarships comes from the interest uh portfolio, my interest on portfolio. Um. Transmission costs, uh. Chair Friday, I, I, I do know that that's something we budget every year, and I do know that's not something we're currently. And I actually have had a conversation with President about this, and the same sentiment is, is we're not using it. I think there's potential uses of it, and maybe a reason, I think some may say to keep it around, but as of right now, I agree. You know, really.
Give us opportunity. I mean, as a committee, is that what we know, or is it an investment committee?
Opportunity, opportunity.
We can, so with this asset, we will, the N R is not.
Well, okay, so when we had a discussion of N A K E S T M regarding the Navo generating station, you have been. It was N A K E S T who initially took on the initiative to assess the assets and assess. How the, the original investment and then the research development company have interest in it, however. I don't know the reports or updating the research development company that have been um. Proceeding to, to meet with the A P S on, on those um of the assets, at least in, in age. Of the assets, at least in in age, the second part to the question that may not directly. Impact. The monetary set aside in our budget, but the other part is the app that's on top of Black Mesa as well. So that's just the whole. I don't know if the research development committee is pursuing that. If this committee would like to pursue that, we can definitely, if you deep dive down those set aside and how those dollars are. Informing or informing how how we should stay informed on those dollars unless Mr. Taki has. Any recollection of what the research development committee has accomplished so far, I've not heard what they. First, I've I've heard about what they pursued, but I don't know if they've accomplished so far, Mr. Taki, do you have any insight to that?
Madam Chairman, as the Budget Finance Committee, the Research and Development Committee did meet with. Intech and APS down in Phoenix, however, that meeting was held at a successful session. So any further information regarding that, I wouldn't, I'd like to blow to you off the record.
Not just Intech, but I'm also talking about the transmission lines, that is all the same, okay. So, when was that, being held in January or February?
Jan- January, I believe it was.
Okay, so this is also recent, so maybe another joint discussion with three six.
Yeah, I think. Just hearing the other guys' questions, there's a lot of. Big picture economic development ideas and. I think they all tie back to the social contractor compact on the issue, so. You know, there's plenty of resources to exploit, but it seems at this point our people are resistant to. Utilizing those resources or seeing the energy and so on. And that pursue energy generation projects and other things like that. And so I think if some of the other businesses that are lower margin than. You know, TDC, for example, say it's on the like bucks, just using random number. If you realize the profit, you tell profit, there's no opportunity to grow that revenue to anything larger, right? You start to find the profit that you can take for reinvestments for your business, then. You can strike the opportunity to grow, and I think. All these businesses have started. Claiming that they're coordinating one way or another, but, you know, we have that, I mean, developing corporation, I feel like everything she thought of there, they have mandatory dividends. And if you have a nice structure, then you can say this year, this company is paying this, you know, to contribute to the dividend. And the other folks. They're gonna take the profits from the investor growth business. And try to have a more strategic or confidential approach, and then. You know, you're dealing with one board. That could keep the companies separate one way or another, but. Have different boards under that, you know, that might run those individual enterprises that have subject matter expertise, but. You know, a lot of our boards are just. You know. A lot of people who have subject matter expertise. Yeah. So I agree with your Russians, I just think. You know, we get a lot of submissions sent to us, and it's our responsibility to synthesize our kind of little ideas. The committee, we have an strategic planning session, couple those conclusions, then we can get a shot on the merchant. Then on the scholarship side, and on the five year plan that started this. Either low margin or non, or non positive cash flow. Say cash, I'm saying. Yeah, actually. Businesses. And very likely, you're right, C stores. That's not really economic development, we certainly dollars in my opinion, we can really within a narrow set basket, it was that there are people need. And so I think a part of this is educating our people ourselves about what economic development actually means. You have to bring a dollar in, you have to do something to bring a dollar in from somewhere else. So if you think about all the things we do on that, oh, and then quantify what that is. That's essentially our economy, and then you think about revenue that comes into the nation. It's a tax, and it's a, it's a percentage of that. And I think, you know, we need to level up the economics of all the conversations we have and not just. Fair, I think. A lot of the things that our people. Think is going to result in X, Y, or Z, but say, these are important resources, we'll invest into them. You need to understand the trade off is going to be that that dollar might not be available for a scholarship, or it might not be available to invest into a higher margin. Growth business. So I. I don't know, I, I, it just seems like every single administration comes out with a neck and round, they develop a growth plan. And people kind of stir it out the door, they start throwing it out the door themselves. And those growth plans don't seem consistent with our people's values, because fundamentally. The lowest hanging fruit are natural resources for, say, I'll stream three million dollars. But then. Our people, if you see net profits circulate in the company and not sort of come back in the mission. With the same set of benefits that they would like to see, it's not like you're, that as well, except you're going to go with the price of. You know, you're taking the assets in front of. Fifty cent a yard, so. I think we'll see more resource, that's what I wish. You know, there was something like that, or are people divided more incentive with other things, so those are my last question.
Thank you, Vice Chair Slater, Eli, before you leave, do you have a number of dates, what days are you available for the month of March?
Um, I'm okay, whatever you go to.
Right, because we will likely schedule a strategic planning meeting until the end of the third month, so we're like finished with our first quarter of the year. So we're gonna start having that discussion, a lot of today's questions about that, so towards the end of the month. All right, thanks, Eli, okay. Okay, members of the committee, does anyone have any question, Vice Chair Slater and the chair, everybody has their prior comments. And thoughts on how we can proceed forward, does anyone else have any questions to report today? All right, here at this time, the vote on the report, delegate Shilin, how do you vote? Delegate Shilin, that's the screen, Shilin, and everyone has their card, how do you vote? Vice Chair, we'll brief with your chairman, everyone has their card, the screen, unless you got the card.
Oh, Madam Chair, I will go.
Delegate, unless you got the card screen, thank you, and Vice Chair, I'm proud to say. I sure, I sure, I'm proud to say, but that we have four voting, affirmative, zero opposed, I'm not voting, one for excuse, motion is carried.
Thank you.
With like. It's been every day since March, aren't you? Talking about, oh, great, I mean, you guys. And Office of Legislative Council, is Office of Legislative Council, all right, great. Want to make sure, because we've done, all right, so let's proceed with our agenda, next we have new business. Vice Chair Carl Slater, can you to deliver. The proceeding and.
Thank you, Ronnie, do you read this? Or you do not? Do you read seventeen twenty? Yeah, I know, other. Okay, so we got legislation seventeen twenty five, action that is about finance, supporting budget finance. Oil and Gas Company Inc., sponsor Chair Hirsch. Mr. Patti. Go ahead and do the. Okay, yeah, we need to record, then we do the motions.
If I can tell members of Budget Finance Committee have legislation somewhere for tracking numbers, zero zero one seven dash two five eight, February twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Part of the resolution, an action relating to the Budget Finance Committee. Appointing Budget Finance Committee member as a shareholder representative to the NAB Oil and Gas Company Inc. The purpose of this resolution will provide shareholder representation, the Budget Finance Committee to the NAB Oil and Gas. Budget Finance Committee has powers of authority for this legislation to be rendered to the record, that's in entirety. My responsibility to this decision is artificial, be prepared for tracking numbers, zero zero one seven five. An actual link to the Budget Finance Committee, a Budget Finance Committee member as a shareholder representative to the NAB Oil and Gas Company Inc. Section one authority, the Budget Finance Committee is standing committee of the NAB Council, two in section five hundred and eight. Section two findings, eight, the charter of the NAB Oil and Gas Company in N O. Be seen at Article five, these states all write to the shareholder of the corporation shall be exercised. The appointed shareholder representative can pose up one member from each of the standing committees, the NAB Council or the existing committees. Be in accordance with the N O, G C charter and applicant. Now, while the Budget Finance Committee is authorized to make one member of the N O G C shareholder representative, see the previous Budget Finance Committee appointed. That they had resigned in. Council doggy on January twenty second, two thousand twenty four, the committee is required to appoint an N O G C. Shareholder representative, section three of school with the Budget Finance Committee, the NAB Council, certified by select and appoint blank. As an application, oil and gas corporation shareholder representative. Then you have the first report, the NAB legislative branch in the public review, something for legislation number zero zero one seven dash two vice conscious, almost shaming pair. This legislation was posted on February twenty second, two thousand twenty five, at three twenty nine P M, the Friday coming period in the October twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five. Was not committed, supported this legislation, not committed, no college recommendation on this legislation. Vice Chair Johnson, reserved, when the price committee, that are on section numbers, zero zero one seven dash two five, running through the record, that's entirety.
You just called the vice chair. You're really fast, you get sloppy, I encourage you. Okay, with you members, I will entertain a motion to consider seventeen twenty five in a second. Delegate Wazzy, a second from Wazzy. And then I'll alternate next time, so then you'll be delegate Wazzy, and you'll be delegate Chair Wazzy. Okay, committee members, your desired presentation from Chair Hirsch. Okay, hearing that, we'll move toward open discussion and comments amendments on the legislation. Anyone except for Ethan. Yes, Chair, please recognize.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Slater, again, this is all on the legislation itself, I do believe we'll need amendments for section three. Vice Chair Slater, I have the other committee members here, we have a vacancy on two enterprise. Shareholder positions, and this is one of them. So Vice Chair Slater, I recommend to the committee that we amend this legislation and insert a name. Would you like to enter into informal discussion to identify a shareholder and kind of that way, or would you like an operation process?
Committee members, the chair is comfortable with informal discussion or moving directed to a nomination. Recent protocol for this, and I was gonna ask. If we're comfortable with consensus, so if some nominates and we have a discussion by consensus, you would then. Offer the amendment, and then go up the amendment to insert the name, and that would be the completion of the process, so. The floor is open for any consideration of what. Process you'd like to see, all right, delegate Wazzy.
Thank you. I would be open to a voluntary, but I still. If there's not anything other. There's no nominations, can you make it easy that way, too? Just want to put that out there, so, thank you.
Okay, I think we still want to talk about the process first, but Julia, they do have volunteers. Committee members, you do have someone that is offered to serve as the shareholder representative. You can entertain motions to amend the legislation. You entertain other motions at this time. The floor is open.
They volunteered.
Yeah, I just know.
I got enough on my calendar, so I volunteer not to go in.
But they always meet in Albuquerque, that's your downtown.
They they have an office out here in St. Michael's.
Committee members, the chair will entertain a motion to amend legislation of delegate Wazzy's name, sorry, Chair Wazzy. The member of the committee will make that nomination, or sorry, propose that amendment.
Well, make the motion.
Chair, I have the motion from Delegate Eric Prawie to amend legislation on page two of two, line three, to insert Delegate Cheryl Gazi. After points and before as there. Is there a second?
Oh, I can think of.
Thank you, Chair, it is your legislation.
We're not used to listening to you. Don't get mad at me.
You notice if you're listening on the line, we're testing our understanding, we see that as a group here. The point I was gonna make is that I think it would be nice that Delegate Luster Gazi would second. To support, or, so. The chair recognizes the motion to amend the legislation at page two of two, line three. After points, insert. Then we get Cheryl Gazi. Before as there. The motion is made by Delegate Cranny, is seconded by Delegate Luster Gazi. Committee members, is there any discussion on the amendment? I just wrote.
Okay, read that.
Okay, committee members, hearing no discussion on amendment number one. Delegate Wazzy, how do you vote? Delegate Wazzy, that's the screen, Delegate Cranny.
Delegate Amber, can this be what Cranny votes, screen?
Delegate, honorable Amber, can this be what Cranny votes? No, no, I have to do that, that's your.
That's another, that's another delegate, the band, not mine.
Delegate Luster Gazi, how do you vote? Delegate Luster Gazi, that's the screen, Chair Parrish, how do you vote? Chair Parrish, that's the screen, Chair hat voting, Delegate Marvin, that's gay, is excuse. So, for in favor, is there opposed to that, including Chair Hirsch? All existing desire, second reading of the legislation, or have any further discussion on it? Okay, hearing none, and no desire for second reading, we'll move forward to a vote on the motion. Go back this way, Chair Parrish, how do you vote? Chair Parrish, that's the screen. Delegate Luster Gazi, how do you vote? Delegate Cranny?
I vote free, Gary.
Delegate Cheryl Gazi? Delegate Cheryl Gazi, Delegate Amber, can this be what Cranny, Delegate Luster Gazi, Chair Parrish, all agree, Delegate Marvin, that's gay, is excused, and Chair, first time, Vice Chair, whatever. I hand you that back over to you. And congratulations, sir, very well.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Carl Slater, thank you, members of the committee with that, yeah. Completed our first item on new business, which is legislation seventeen twenty five. Raising bonds in the new business, I think we get on the agenda. Our legislative advisor had noted lots of detail on that, but scheduling. Motion must just schedule, because some of these other items came up throughout the discussions today. So I'm gonna recognize and go back and do the recording, I believe, as much on the fourth, Chair Amber, can I, for crying, was commodified. The agenda to put I and B under new business as scheduling, so we'll proceed to that item. And we'll have a discussion on scheduling, so members of the committee. Through this new business item, I'd like to ask the committee, if the committee is okay, moving our March fourth meeting to a different date. We could. I've heard a few, one member say that March eleventh does not work for them for the rescheduling. And I'm asking. Us to move the March fourth meeting because we just came off the budget, and I think everybody needs a moment to. Just take a break for a second, and also give Office of Management and Budget some time to re gear up for the next budget, and. I hope in our next two meetings throughout the month of March, that we're able to cover important topics regarding the budget instruction manual. And also the interest fund. And the C H S in workforce, and so we can start to organize that through leadership meetings and regular meetings, but. To stay on topic, the regular meeting for March fourth, and asking if we can reschedule that based on your calendars and availability. Vice Chair Slater, do you have a recommendation, go ahead.
Can we, Chair, can you just enter some of the informal discussion?
Let's change it to informal, informal discussion at one twenty P M to discuss scheduling items. What is the order convenient about?
Thank you all for your patience. We're going to roll back to the Budget and Finance Committee. Calling it back to the special, we have Delegate Sharan Yasi, Chairman of the American Embassy on Friday. We tell you about the new Chair CrossFit, I was just kind of warm, you can write in. Now, so I'm going to recognize my Chair CrossFit on the business beat.
And Chair, I'm playing my calendar, so to make sure our dates accurately. The motion to reschedule the March 4 meeting to March 31st, that'll be a special meeting on March 31st. Maybe I'll turn my... Mark Carl will appear in the back. To restate that, March 4 regular meeting will be rescheduled to March 31st. We'll hear the basic plan, sorry, not basic plan, we'll hear revenue projection, other items required under Title 12 and appropriations act. We'll continue with our regular meeting on April 1st. And then, going back on March 25th, we will have a special joint meeting with the Resource and Development Committee on a few different items, including, without limit to capital program, BIDF, and then
That was transition.
The transmission line, if I can hear. Right, that's over there. Okay, and then, we will continue with our regularly scheduled meeting on the 18th. Is there a... And we will conduct a work session on the budget instructions, we're going to move on the 24th.
Second? Question later, does that conclude your motion?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, everyone has to send me a happy birthday message.
Well, put your number out into the internet. They're very curious about you.
If you email me, I can read them. I just don't like my followers rather than my numbers, sorry.
Okay.
Then, Attorney General Prince will give you the first round.
Just second, five or six minutes.
The motion on the floor is to reschedule March 4 meeting to the 31st. A dinner work session on 24th, and a joint meeting, joint meeting with the Resource and Development Committee on March 25th. Members of the committee, if there is second to the motion. Second by Delegate Sharan Yasi. Members of the committee, are there any questions to the motion on the floor? There are none, so we're going to gain excuse, Delegate Sharan Yasi, how do you vote?
Green.
Delegate Sharan Yasi, go screen, Chairman of the American Embassy, how do you vote?
Green.
Chairman of the American Embassy, go screen, if you can shut it, and Delegate Sharan Yasi, how do you vote?
I vote for Chair.
Delegate Sharan Yasi, go screen, Chairman of the Chair CrossFit, how do you vote?
Green.
Chairman of the Chair CrossFit, go screen, with that, we're forms voting affirmative zero vote, so I'm voting for the President's Carried on scheduling item provisions, item key on energy business. Thank you, members of the committee, we got active upon our new business item key. We're going to move on in the agenda, to the end of our agenda. We are announcements, members of the committee, are there announcements? All right, here and then.
What would you want us to say?
Oh, who won, the Bengals or the... Or the Chevron, who won, I'm sorry. Oh, my name is Mr. Vio.
For the Arizona side, I saw there was...
Tonight, 6pm and 8pm. I have reported, we're just... So, you guys are just giving your... Probably...
On my way out, Arthur.
Members of the committee, I'll listen to Mr. Taki and Office of the Speaker on reserving some time, potentially on Monday, for a K-10 announcement on the budget. Is that okay with everyone, if you're available on Monday? Well, the work speakers office on reserving some time to talk about the budget. K-10. Um, Monday. Yeah, well, we'll try to recruit them, everyone's schedule is Monday on that. And then, I was about to make an announcement to everyone out there that the, our March 4th, sorry, March, yeah, March 4th meeting is, will not be meeting on March 4th, but we're meeting on... yeah, March fourth meeting is, we will not be meeting on March fourth, but we need, our next meeting for the Budget Finance Committee is March eighteen and then following March thirty first. So we will have some time with uh back in our communities. I just want to uh really extend my appreciation for the Budget Finance Committee and their work on the FY two thousand twenty five comprehensive budget. Thank you to my colleagues, but also um to our communities who are allowing us to be here in Widerock to have these discussions. It was six months of working through plenty of bureaucracy and plenty of uh advisement. So I do want to extend my heartfelt appreciation. Um thank you again for your time. Um and also thanks to our controller, Sean Pique, for her advisement to Office of Management and Budget for um their their budgeting advisors and officers for assisting the committee. Early on, the OMB was just always asked me, was they were ready to go? So they continue to um be very, very diligent and I just want to thank the, also the leadership that uh from this all the time at the Office of Management and Budget and all of our budgeting officers and the should be all as well. So thank you all. Um we'll see everyone back at the Budget Finance Committee on March eighteen, two thousand twenty five, uh with that uh members of the committees, our motion for adjournment. Motion by Chairman Eberk, that's my crime. And would like to second that motion. Thinking about that, unless you're asking, thank you. That's all you're asking, we'll go to the other side. Uh Delegate Norman, we gave us excuse. Delegate Sherlin, how do you?
Green.
Delegate Sherlin has a vote screen and Chairman Eberk has a party, how do you vote? Chairman Eberk has a party vote screen, Delegate, unless you're asking.
I've tried looking.
Delegate, unless you're asking, vote screen and the best share across there.
I vote green.
Best share across every vote screen. We have four members getting affirmative zero votes, myself not voting. We are adjourned. Oh, and if one member speaks, we are adjourned at two or two P M. Thank you all.